All right, we'll call to order a regular meeting of the Town Superior Planning Commission. Can we have the roll call, please?
Chairperson Jim Satel.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Robert Momarts.
Here.
Commissioner Stoll Sarden here, Bob McCool.
Here.
Jerry Melia.
Here.
Jason Reese.
Here.
Lisa Ritchie.
Here.
Anthony Stewart.
Here.
Steve Woody. Planner Stephen Williams.
Here.
Attorney Dan Harvey.
Here.
Thanks, fellas. First item is public comment on the consent agenda or non-agenda items. Assuming probably not. All right. So the next item is public hearing and adoption of a resolution recommending approval of the final plat and final development plan for Discovery Office Park Superior Town Center replat number three. Go ahead and call the public hearing to order. Do we have proof of publication?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Stephen, do you have staff have a presentation for us?
Yeah, staff has a presentation and then we have Chase Mullin here tonight from MIG, who's our 3D design consultant and he'll walk us through a 3D model after I present. And then we have representatives from the applicant as well, Dan Ovita and two of his consultants, and they have a presentation as well. So that's kind of the order we'll go in if that's all right with you.
Sounds good.
Okay. Stephen Williams, Town Staff. Tonight's development application involves both a final plat and a final development plan for Discovery Office Park. The image on the screen is a bird's eye view of the proposed development taken from the 3D rendering that you'll see shortly. The subject property is located northeast of the intersection of McCarlin and Discovery Parkway. Superior Town Center lies both to the north and to the east. The current DOP office building that has been developed lies directly south across Discovery Parkway. Original town lies to the northwest. Staff's cover memo as well as the applicant's project narratives also provide a brief history of the DOP subdivision and the development approvals. In short, the PD dates back to 2001 and was originally approved for roughly 120,000 square feet of office development. One FDP followed for the existing office building in 2004, more recently in 2015. The PD was amended and a joint plat was processed with the Town Center to facilitate the extension of Discovery Parkway into the Town Center. The PD amendment also permitted a residential component to be incorporated into the development. And tonight's FDP proposal seeks to gain the required approval to construct the residential units that were contemplated in 2015. So the first portion of the application is the plat. It involves three plat sheets that are illustrated here as well as explained in the project narrative that was provided. The proposed, or the primary purpose of the plat is to create the 20 residential lots for the proposed duplex product as well as the associated development improvements. The proposed configuration of these properties is illustrated on sheet three and we'll get to that here in a second. And then also includes several easement vacations which are detailed on sheet two. So here's a closer look at plat sheet three. The proposed replat would create a new privately owned road. I didn't grab a pointer. A new privately owned road. That's kind of shown in gray there. I don't know if we got one or not. I'll use the mouse. So illustrated here in gray and then two connection points off of Discovery Office or Discovery Parkway shown here in the two arrows. One is existing or would occur just to the west of the existing median and one would occur further east towards the end of the development.
Oh, thank you very much.
The 20 residential lots range in size from 3,400 square feet to 4,300 square feet. And the lot widths along the proposed roadway which is to be named Canary Lane range in width from 34 feet to 50 feet. Lot depths average around 95 feet. Lot 21, the remaining development parcel up here wouldn't be developed at this time. It's just platted for future development. Parcel A would continue around to the west and provide a turnaround here as well as some landscaping on the north side of these lots. The other aspect of this application is for outlot B to be created for an expanded detention facility or an improved detention facility to accommodate about half of this development proposal. And that outlot is proposed to be dedicated to the town. Plat sheet two details five, has five details associated with it, three of which are related to easements and two are just kind of close in views of line segments that you wouldn't otherwise see at the scale of plat sheet three. Then it also includes the curve and line tables and then this easement vacation exhibit. So easements are kind of lumped into three categories, easements A, B, and C. A is a little bit more complicated, involves several easements. We'll get back to that in a second. Easement B is here in the northeast corner, northwest corner, excuse me, of block 21. And it is really just proposed to be reconfigured and it will be rededicated through this plat as well. It's just adjusted slightly. The other easement is easement C, which was created back in 1982 and it was for the construction and maintenance of McCarlin Boulevard. It's no longer necessary, but it would need to be vacated in order to allow the grading that would occur with this proposed development. So there are four easements related to easement, the group of easements within vacation request A. And the highlighted one is the one that I bring your attention to in staff's memo. It's the only one that would also be vacated and not reestablished. So it's a trail easement that was contemplated in 2015 through the PD and the plat and it's shown here. And originally this application came in with no, and technically it still has no proposed alternative. The alternative has been worked out with Ranch Capital and we'll get into those details later. But essentially instead of having an easement go through the Discovery Office Park development, that easement would occur within block 25 to the immediate east. And the intent of this easement at the time of the Discovery Office Park plat was to have a connection, a north, south-north connection between Discovery Office Park's kind of commercial development and the core of the Town Center. So when the DOP was created, that trail easement was established to ensure that both pedestrian and ADA connectivity was established. Through the administrative rounds of review, staff informed the applicant that it needed to be reestablished as I just mentioned. And the viable alternative that they came up with is kind of shown on the bottom right here. But this is the PD that exists. It shows the north, north-south kind of connection here and it ties into block 25 kind of here to the north. The proposed alternative would route this, would route a pedestrian accessible route rather than both a pedestrian and an ADA accessible route further to the east and then drop pedestrians to the south kind of through the center of block 25 before they're routed back up north. And we'll get into those details more through the FDP application materials. But you know, staff's, as staff's memo outlines, the kind of primary concerns with the reestablishment is the, it's not quite as direct as it once was and certainly it's not as wide as it was originally intended to be. And then the ADA accessible access does not occur in this instance. There's three sets of stairs that allow them to get down to the center of block 25. So ADA accessibility would go from what's shown here in this PD to needing to be routed along the right of way of Discovery Parkway onto Village Green and then back up through Promenade Drive. So moving on to the final development plan, the FDP cover sheet includes the required components, including the project title, legal description, vicinity map, signature blocks, and sheet index. It also includes several tables that outline various development components and where exceptions to standards, also highlight where exceptions to standards are requested. The parking data table clarified here at the bottom clarifies that 88 parking spaces are proposed to accommodate the 10 duplexes. Two garage spaces and two driveway spaces are afforded to each unit. Eight additional off-street guest parking spaces are also proposed within Canary Lane. The duplex, there's two different duplex types which we'll get into with the elevations. The duplex one would have an optional fourth bedroom and duplex two would have an optional fifth bedroom. So where this deviates from the existing DOP PD is both in terms of the number of bedrooms and the number of parking spaces proposed. So the Discovery Office Park Plan Development contemplated three bedroom units and 72 parking spaces in total. So this proposal would allow for 88 in total, which is an increase obviously. But it's, staff's not necessarily concerned with the amount of parking per the amount of units, but doesn't want to clarify that essentially the ratio of what's being provided for interior garage parking versus what's being provided externally has now shifted. So 50% of the required garage or off-street parking spaces would be garage versus a larger percentage that was originally contemplated when there was only three bedrooms proposed. This sheet also includes a zoning data table, illustrates both that the duplexes fall within the 32-foot height maximum that was established. Due to grades in the walkout basement designs, these duplexes will appear as two stories from the south and as three-story structures from the north. The table also conveys front, rear, and side setbacks proposed as well as the setbacks from adjacent public rights away. So the two other primary deviations from what was contemplated in the PD concerned side setbacks and then the setback from, from the right of way. But the, the PD is a little inconsistent. So although it started, I think it's partly to be explained because the PD started as a commercial PD and then it incorporated or folded in the residential component, it didn't necessarily distinguish different setbacks for the different uses, which you typically see, you know, a different setback for a commercial use than a residential use. So, and then the other aspect of the PD that's a little misleading is that on the second sheet it suggests that the setbacks for a duplex could be a five-foot side setback whereas on the first sheet of the PD it says that it has to be 10 feet and then clarifies that there's also a minimum distance from internal property lines of 10 feet. So we've kind of gone forward with this as needing an exception because kind of the overriding guidance suggests a 10-foot side setback. So that's the other thing that both Planning Commission and the board need to consider is whether or not they feel the five-foot side setback is appropriate. The other differentiation here is that we have the setback from McCarlin Road that's 50 feet and this proposal, and it doesn't differentiate between commercial and residential uses. So staff worked with the applicant to try to get a larger setback from McCarlin Road than 50 feet for the residential use because it didn't change from the commercial use. Commercial use would obviously be less impacted by McCarlin than a residential use would be given the traffic volumes and the noise impacts off of McCarlin. But what's proposed is 51 feet, two inches, which does meet the standard, but again the setback standards for the Discovery Office Park didn't necessarily get updated to address the residential uses. Moving through the plan sheets, this is the context sign, context plan sheet. The FDP includes all the required sheets and also includes some sheets that aren't required. And so we'll discuss some of the sheets that will probably be removed from the final development application before the Town Board meeting and made into exhibits rather than actual FDP sheets. The context plan here also will need to be updated, but we did request that the applicant provide this information that's shown in red. So this is a current development application that the town is reviewing, but it hasn't got to Planning Commission or the Town Board. But it's important context to see what's going to occur next to, or what's proposed to occur next to this current proposal for Discovery Office Park. The overall site plan illustrates the comprehensive proposal in greater detail. This sheet also includes a street section for Canary Lane at the top and two typical plot plans for each duplex type on the far right. The site plan map helps illustrate the configurations proposed of the duplexes within those 20 residential lots and clarifies that two distinct duplex types are proposed. They're generally proposed to alternate as you move down Canary Lane. There is one instance where two structures would be, two identical structures, two of their duplex two types would be sited next to one another. This map also shows in a little bit better detail where the additional off-street parking is proposed here kind of center to the development and then over here further to the rest. And then it shows, or to the east, excuse me, and then it shows the turnaround that's proposed on the west side. Staff has reviewed this design of the access drive and the required turnaround that was provided and worked to ensure that the 24-foot wide lane also met all access and emergency response requirements. These partial site plan sheets are provided for each group, each group set, you know, for landscaping as well as irrigation. They're all broken up consistently. At this scale, the finer details of the design are more apparent. As related previously, the applicant has worked with RC Superior to provide an alternative trail alignment. That's shown in this kind of red circle area. That's where that would occur. And this is the 3D image of what that looks like. So the property lot 20 would end where this dash line is. A five-foot sidewalk trail would be constructed here and then you'd have a few feet before the development within block 25 begins to the east. That outlot that is proposed within block 25 ranges from seven to 13 feet wide. And what was previously proposed within the developments was greater. So what was shown for the easement was closer to 35 to 50 feet as it went through the Discovery Office Park development. And what's required by the town, just general town standards for a trail easement is 50 feet in width. So this easement diagram just kind of shows what was proposed. What is, so this is what the easement was platted at and that's 30 to 40 foot width. And then this is the 90 foot width that was actually shown on the, on the PD. So should the Planning Commission, you know, or the Town Board decide that a larger width is required, that would need to be a condition of this proposal or this approval. This proposal also includes a request to dedicate outlot B as a detention pond to the town. So the applicant has worked with Public Works in order to build the detention pond to meet town standards. It's essentially located here in this northwest corner. It's got two retaining walls that are detailed on these profiles here on the bottom right. There's also a section cut to kind of show what that looks like and the topography of the site in general, sloping down to the pond. So you'd see the top wall from the south and you'd see both walls from the north. The bottom wall, the wall furthest north is about eight feet in height and the wall to the south reaches a height of six foot at the max, but it does taper off as it goes to the west. So the FDP includes two elevation plan sheets to illustrate each of the two duplex models that are proposed. Each sheet is organized in the same fashion with front, side, and rear elevations arranged on the right side and two perspective images on the left. Tables clarifying the material percentages are included in the center. The south elevation reflects on the bottom right here reflects the front facade and illustrates advantages that will be visible from Discovery Parkway. The type one model here would appear 27 feet, two inches tall from this perspective and span roughly 60 feet. This facade is characterized by four single car garages, porch elements and a variety and the variety of materials proposed. Building entrances are sited on each corner of the unit and accented by covered porches featuring corrugated metal roof. Front doors are recessed and this porch element wraps around the building sides as well as the building fronts encompassing the outer garage bays. So you can see it here and you can see that porch element from the side elevation as well. The center of the duplex features large windows over the interior garage doors and stucco siding. Gable roofs and board and batten siding have been incorporated over the outer garages. Side elevations are defined by a stone veneer base which extends the entire height of the first floor. There's a very generous amount of stone on the side elevations here. Second and third floor materials include a mix of stucco and board and batten siding and glazing. Building articulation is provided on both the second and third floors and roof articulation has been incorporated into this elevation as well. Material finish used, are used to define the third, the three floors on the north and elevation here at the top, which is also what you're going to see from the Town Center. Stone veneer is used to ground the first floor and will also wrap the columns that support the cover decks that had been afforded on the second levels. Second levels are otherwise finished with board and batten siding and extensive windows and patio doors. The upper third level is stucco accented by windows. This elevation also features gable roof elements and detailed roof articulation. The second duplex model, okay, and the first duplex model ranges in square feet from 1,922 square feet to 2,560, oops, while duplex two is a little bit larger ranging from 2,400 square feet to just, just over 3,400 square feet. And that's with basement finishes add for that additional square footage. So it's organized in the same fashion. It's also kind of designed similarly, doesn't have, instead of having the metal corrugated porch, it has pergola, but four single car garages, gabled roofs on the second, second levels on this elevation, similar stone, not quite as tall, but defining the base of the side elevation and a little bit more stucco. But what, what kind of differentiates this one is this step down where the three stories doesn't extend all the way to the north. This drops down to a two-story building which is intended to help reduce the massing of this north elevation. And then the other thing on this one is that they have, these second floor is enclosed, it protrudes out and then it kind of covers these internal, more internal patios that are on the second level of this, of this elevation. And then one central gable kind of defines this facade for the third elevation, for the third floor elevation. The perspectives help provide, you know, some context as to where facade, there's changes in the depths of the facade and how much all of those roof overhangs extend out. As noted above, this application includes several perspective images that are not FDP requirements and will be shown as exhibits in a future submittal. The images here convey perspectives from the south, kind of where Canary Lane is proposed, looking both to the west and to the east. Due to the curvilinear alignment of Canary Lane, the orientation of these homes will vary somewhat. The geometry of the street also creates some variation in building separations as spacing between the units isn't uniform. So depending on the curve of the street, sometimes it's wider in the front and narrow in the back and sometimes it's the reverse. The FDP also includes other required, the other required FDP components, including the lighting plan shown here on the top left and the landscape plan shown on the bottom right. We can get into details of each of these in more specificity if need be. The lighting component or the lighting plan incorporates one wall fixture and the same street light fixture that's been incorporated within the Town Center, which is a positive considering that this Canary Lane will extend into block 25. So that consistency is good. Otherwise, all the lighting levels and fixture types meet town standards. The general design for the landscape is to, to develop the south side of Canary Lane with a certain amount of landscaping. It basically ends at this point. So one of staff's conditions was that this sod not just be kept, but that we have a more consistent landscape plan along the south side of the street so that it's a consistent feel for the residential uses and then it can transition after this, this entrance. We feel like the landscaping for both entrances into this development should be consistent. The rest of the landscape plan is somewhat influenced by the topography of the site as well as the detention area, which will only accept a certain amount of, you know, heavy water tolerant plants. And then the front of the individual units as well as the rears are proposed to have some fairly minimal landscaping along the front. And a lot of this is also due to not wanting to irrigate, heavily irrigate these individual lots that are kind of, that are sited on a fairly difficult terrain. So you'll see rock mulch around the perimeter of the buildings and then landscaping along the perimeter of the lots. So staff's recommendation is outlined here. We're recommending approval and then the consideration that we've kind of highlighted through this presentation of the proposed trail vacation, the required part, the requested parking increase as well as the bedroom increase. And then some comments and discussion about the side yard setback as well as the appropriate, whether or not 50 feet or 51 feet, foot, two inch setback proposed from McCarlin is appropriate. That concludes my presentation. I'll turn it over to Chase.
Thanks, Steve.
Unless you have any questions at this time.
You know, I think given the length of the presentation, I just wanted to ask, do you folks want to raise questions now for Stephen or do you want to wait till we have all three presentations and then kind of have at it that way? Do you have any preferences?
I'm fine with waiting.
Yeah, my preference would be to wait until after all the presentations.
Sure. Oh, sorry, I gotta hit that.
Good evening. So I'm gonna kind of, you know, take, take us on a little flight kind of through it. Please ask for anything specific that you'd like me to, any vantage points or kind of paths you'd like me to take.
Could you start with your name?
Oh, sorry. Chase Mullin with MIG.
So 10 feet total?
10 feet total, yep.
And that's, that's at this?
E-
So, yeah, so you're, you're looking at five feet from each house at the narrowest point and since everything is on an angle.
That's the minimum that they've requested. In the staff's memo, we go through the ranges of setbacks for the side and some of them are closer to seven, some are, the greatest setback is on the far east and it's 10 feet one from the property line.
Okay.
But the minimum proposed is five foot and one inch.
And then here's that trail alignment, was the beginning of it.
Could, could you go down that trail as, as it would, is there, I don't know if you've got it in here, but as it would travel down to town center?
Thanks, Stephen, you're gonna have to help me out here after-
Yeah, you go back, kind of tuck next to the building and then around here you circle back down to the other buildings and then you stay in the internal courtyard right now. I mean, and again, it hasn't been finalized. We've given initial comments on it, but you can see the topography of block 25 as well.
And how would it go from the original PD?
From the original PD, it goes close to between, you know, the center lots, like right over Lot 9, and then it connects closer to the units, you know, the units, I guess I have no control.
And does it go, does it just travel down to Old Railway? Is that the-
So it would come kind of through here and then it was originally proposed to connect right here at the, kind of the northern part of, and then connect in here. So it was more direct.
And ADA, and it was-
So it did, it did stop right here, that's as far as it went. There was no proposed connection because we had no control. It's kind of touching some of the upper story windows here.
So this is sort of a view from the before, is that the outside?
Yeah.
Is that, is that supposed to be the new hotel over there? No, or what is that over there?
This, that's the existing office.
Oh, so that's looking, okay, all right.
This is the, I think this is the hotel.
Okay.
Yeah, could you come down the hill from McCaslin, from Rock Creek Parkway?
Yeah.
Just kind of at street level? And then turn around and come back up at street level?
It's about that.
Yeah, it's about 40.
Yep. Then maybe from, yeah, just starting it.
Yeah, like as you're coming around the roundabout maybe and just looking back up at it.
Hmm. And is this the proposed landscape for that north side or whatever?
No, it is not.
Okay.
I'm not quite sure what landscape it is. It's somewhere between existing and partial existence. You can see as indicated there-
If you're gonna speak, you're gonna need to come up to the mic to actually talk.
We were actually concerned about the landscaping, but you can see, you can see on the, on the floor plan that there's, there's a lot more trees illustrated here. So I'm not quite certain or wasn't convinced what the trees that are articulated in three dimensions, what they actually represent, whether they represent the existing or some version of the existing, I'm not quite clear. So there's actually a lot, I think there's a, there's a fair amount of existing trees working on the property. Obviously, we're trying to protect the most, the most we can. But I do want to make it clear that the landscaping that's articulated here is not the, the final proposed landscape.
I'm also curious, the vantage point from particularly these homes along the west side overlooking the detention pond, how much of that they'd be able to see if they're gonna be looking down on top of, or will it kind of feel like they're, they're looking beyond it?
Detention's kind of this little section here.
Is there, is there like a second story balcony up there? Is that what-
Yeah, second and third on the larger units. the retaining wall on the bottom side, wouldn't be seen from the south.
Right. I'm more worried about, I think, the, just the concrete structures down in the detention pond itself, if they're not kind of softened through landscaping or things like that. We can talk about that more too, but just from a visibility perspective from those homes.
Are these, are these owned or rental or what's the-
For sale units.
They're for sale? Would that be an individual duplex for sale or a building?
Duplex.
The, the unit?
Individual units, so each building would be two units.
Yeah, each building sited on its own lot. So, or each, each half of the, yeah, duplex is sited on its own lot.
And you don't have anything with the building masses, like from this point? I saw in the drawings, there were some building masses shown, you know, that you could see through. I just wondered if on the 3D if you had a magic button.
So we, staff is, you know, like, like the applicant suggested, they, they wanted more landscaping in here and we're trying to keep it consistent with what we've done with previous 3D models. The intent for the 3D model is for the massing to be illustrated. Chase has gone above that, that threshold to do all the finishes that are proposed on here. I mean, these are really quite detailed massing models, but we don't typically include all the landscaping or, and then what's shown on the perspectives on the FDPs, you know, conceptually discuss max development potential, but we don't know what that really is gonna be. You know, it's the same kind of discussion we had for the sign, you know, like what on the proposed monument sign off of McCaslin as to whether or not it was gonna, a 50-foot tall sign was gonna sit next to a 50-foot tall building or a 20-foot tall building. We don't know it. So it's hard to, hard to consider, I guess, at this point.
Is there additional parking on one or either side of the streets there on Discovery Lane?
No, there's no parking on Discovery Lane. So the additional on-street parking for this development has to be contained within Canary Lane, and there's four spots centrally located and there's four spots further to the east.
So it's backwards.
No, I think they were both labeled Discovery. So no on-street parking really other than those inset on any of it, right?
There's on-street parking on Canary Lane, but there's no on-street parking on-
So you can park in addition to those pullouts on Canary Lane, you can park along Canary Lane?
No, it's not wide enough.
Right, okay.
And if they are west end of Canary Lane, that whole-
It'll be signed for no parking, it's just a turnaround.
But this is private, so we don't really have any controls over parking on the-
It's a privately owned public access easement, so we, the trick there is that we don't, we wouldn't accept a roadway of that width. That doesn't meet our public access standards. We need 32 feet. So it's consistent with what's being proposed within the town center, so it's, it's still publicly accessible.
But who, who do they, who do they call if there's a problem?
Uh, the metro, so the, the proposal is for the town center metro district to take over Parcelay, but it hasn't happened yet. So I think Jim Brozovic could speak to that a little bit more detail, but they've had an initial discussion at the metro district level about whether or not they would take it and the, the indication was they would. I mean, they, they're maintaining Canary Lane further to the east as you get into block 25 and they would, they would accept this as well.
Provide enforcement if there were an issue with parking?
My assumption is yes, yeah.
Would you mind zooming out and then panning a little bit towards the south so we see all of, yeah, where the five buildings or the four additional buildings could possibly be built? Okay.
So you mean in, within Discovery?
Within Discovery, yeah.
To the south, to the west.
Yes, yeah. I'm just trying to understand from an impact. I know that the original plan for the pathway to come down to the center was based off of the five buildings and the, and the people that work in those buildings being able to access town center. I'm just trying to determine whether, you know, how much of an impact a change would be.
And is there anything proposed for Lot 21?
No, not at this time.
Would it be resi, I mean, is it, is it zone, I mean?
It's considered flux space and so the intent of the PD, as I understand it, was for it to, you know, potentially be commercial, but-
Can you, can you circle roughly where that is in this 3D drawing? Is that right, is it that whole parcel?
Yeah.
I didn't think it was that whole, that big, okay.
So we've had some discussions with the applicant because of the topography of the site. The initial proposal in 2016, I want to say, was for that to be residential as well and the town felt it was premature to consider residential on that until we knew what was gonna surround it on Old Railway. So if it's commercial there, then the indication is that we, you know, probably want it to stay commercial, but if there's residential there, then we'll consider that once we know the context of the surrounding development. But for now, the, the one caveat I guess I didn't explain is that Lot 21 is part of the plat, but not part of the FDP. It's just created as a future development parcel, like carved off as part of the plat, but it's not part of this FDP, no improvements are proposed. There'll be some grading work that's done, but that's not, doesn't require its own FDP.
So the, the trail, the originally proposed trail would have been between, in this plan, between nine and 10 or nine and 11?
Yeah, it kind of went through nine and 10, but it also impacted because of the, oh, I guess I keep forgetting that we're on a different screen. It also impacted, if we go back to that screen, it impacted part of these other, the depths of these lots that are proposed.
Right.
Just at different points as they kind of cuts through and connects to block 25. We still have a developer application or a presentation to get through too, so I don't know if you guys have any other questions on this, but we-
Anything else for Chase?
Yes, I really appreciate these 3D views, those are awesome.
Very helpful, thank you.
Is it easier if I just put it here? Uh, no, I haven't pulled up. Just one second. Jim Bray, 1300 Yell Pine.
So I've been working- Sorry, Chase had it hidden away. So I've been working on this site now for 15, 18 years? A long time. We've been in particular working on this, on this piece now for a little over three years. Basically, the, the development here was, was spurred based on the SDC coming into play and a required realignment of Discovery Parkway to work with our neighbors. So, you know, we, we, we worked with Ranch to realign this road and also it was, it was actually very good for us to see the residential development happening and, and kind of spurred the opportunity to, to develop these residential pieces here. This lot was very difficult, still is very difficult to develop based on the topography and what was originally approved 15 years ago was, was two, two commercial buildings which were pretty hulking and pretty hard to land on the site. So dividing this up into residential lots really, really worked better with the topography and also offers some really great views, as everyone knows, off to the north and to the west. And so, you know, what we've done here is we've, we've really created these splayed lots. I think we've all been talking about or were concerned about some of this, the setbacks to the, the property lines and they're, they're, as staff said, they, they're roughly just, just shy of seven feet minimum and, but the average between, the distance between the two buildings, the average is, is a little over 19 feet. So that splay is really advantageous for opening up the architecture between, between the buildings. And then also the setbacks that we're talking about, I want everyone to understand they're also from these entrance porches that we've, that we've shown. So we have entrance porches on, on the front corners and then on the rear corners where it splays back in, we have decks. So these are, when we talk about the seven foot dimension between the, the lot line and the buildings, it's really to what I'll call softer elements rather than a three-story wall. So I want everyone to understand that in particular. So I'm not gonna, I think we've covered a lot of things really well, so I'm gonna just kind of hit some of the high points that we've been talking about. So the other piece that we've been talking about and actually I'll go through a little bit more of you, so this is a little bit better or animated view with a little bit more landscaping in here. Again, you know, we, we've really created a, what we think is a nice lane opportunity for the architecture to sit on. There's been discussion that this street is, is narrower than some of the other street profiles within town, but it is consistent with SDC and we think that is important because we, first of all, we want to see a limited amount of paving. I think the more paving we have, the more drainage we have, the more problems we have, et cetera, et cetera. But also just the general scale of a neighborhood street gets awfully broad with some of these larger streets, street standards. So, so we've actually worked hard to keep this street as narrow as we can. We have, we think we have plenty of parking. We have over four spots per unit and, you know, taking into account 20, 20 houses, someone's gonna have one car, someone's gonna have six cars. We all know this, they're all gonna have to live with that, but we know that this average number is, is, is fair, is reasonable and we don't want to build the church for, for Easter Sunday here. You know, if there's some overflow parking, I'm sure Danny might have problems with people parking across the way, but that'll be his problem, but we think the, the number is, is pretty reasonable based on the number of units and if someone really has that many cars, they have a car problem. The other thing- The other thing that this is really showing is just, again, some more of the diversity of the product. This is really, this is really a, a much smaller development than what we're seeing in the rest of the SDC. And we've always, we've always kind of reveled in that opportunity. I think that the rest of the developers, and you guys are seeing them one after another come in here, are really, really pushed to optimize the number of units and the density on their sites. And you're looking at, you know, alley-loaded products, and you're looking at three, four-story products, and tuck-in underneath parking. This is a little bit more traditional, and we feel that this actually will become one of its attributes in the development to provide new product in the area. We've also gone out of our way to make sure that the units are designed for first-floor masters to allow them to be available for elderly and, and not just, not just maybe some of the millennial denser housing that we're seeing spring up in the rest of the SDC. So we think that diversity is needed, should be welcomed, and gives us actually, not necessarily advantage, but gives us an opportunity to make ourselves unique within the market. In addition to that, obviously, the views are gonna be paramount in making the product very sellable. Let me go through one more piece here. So these are the architecture pieces, if anyone has some more discussion on these, I'm willing to talk about those. Obviously, I think everyone should appreciate, you can see a lot of ins and outs that we've done here to really articulate the architecture. And that's really expressed in the floor plan layouts too, so that they're not just, they're not just big boxes. And there, that articulation allows for windows and views in these splayed layouts to really activate the spaces in between, in between the buildings and the, and the rear patios. I'm gonna get to these views, which we talked about. This view, I think, was very important. This kind of, unfortunately, this came from Chase's first presentation here, where we got to be the guinea pig on this about three years ago. And at this point, there was no other articulation of any architecture to be seen in fifteen miles from our site. And so we were, we were standing out, standing out like we were on the moon. So we found it very important for everyone to appreciate kind of the envelope that is approvable down here at the bottom of the hill, and, and how that will affect these views as you drive up McCaslin. I think it's very easy for us to, to maybe kind of pick on it that it's up here, it's on the hill, it's all by itself. But again, if you look at the landscaping plan, there's tremendous amount of landscaping as much as we think we can bear based on the hillside slope along the north side of this, as well as within the detention pond. And then, again, consider, we ask you to consider that, you know, there's, there's a pretty high or tall envelope approved to the north there. These are just some other bird's eyes, and again, these are kind of just kind of raw at the moment to give you an idea of just massing. But again, here, here are those envelopes down below that are approved. So they're pretty hulking. That's not to say that they're all gonna be built that way, and hopefully not, but just to give you an idea. Also, you start to get an idea of how this, how the street set, or escape is set up, and how we're following the continuation of what's been established with SDC. And then you can also see the height and the mass of some of these multifamily housing components that are approved further to, further to the east. So this is the other piece which we really want to cover. This, this is showing the current plan for the path, which comes up from the town center, comes along sidewalks here, comes back around behind here where Chase was walking us, and back up into this area. This red line is indicating what was originally approved before that was winding its way up through here. You can see that there's a separation distance of about a hundred and twelve feet from what was previously approved. It's important to understand that we had no idea what was happening in lot twenty-five here, so we were dumping into this lot. And there was also, I'm not, I don't think it's fair that staff was saying that this was ADA, that this was an ADA path. I don't think that there was ever any ability to make that ADA. Jim Brostovich, three-two-three Fifth Street, Frederick. When we originally did the PD in 2014, there were a set of guidelines, proposed guidelines that the ADA had on trails. ADA evolves over time. Those guidelines have now been adopted. And I talked to the ADA, they actually have people you can call and ask for their interpretations. Describing this trail in the context of this urban setting, they said that they would not consider this to be a trail, they would consider this to be an urban transportation link. And therefore, the proposed trail guidelines would not be applicable to this. It would need to meet ADA straight up, meaning much more rigorous slope constraints, handrails and things like that. So even if we were coming back today with a trail along that alignment, it couldn't be made ADA. It's just mathematically impossible with the grades we have to make, based on the current regulations. Yeah, so I just want to make sure everyone understands that we're not, we're not somehow sacrificing the design threshold of that. The other, the other, you know, I do want to remind everyone, I don't think more than two or three of you were here before, but we were actually asked in this room to abandon this path because there was discussion that if you were in SDC down here, you would simply go to McCaslin and go up that path. And that this was actually, you know, getting it further back here, gets it back more into the core, and where potentially a lot more of the residences are gonna be. So I think the discussion of how convenient this path is has not changed. I, I think that there's maybe even a discussion based on the separation distance of where it's entering lot twenty-five, it's almost negligible. And the fact that it's bringing it up maybe a little bit further to the east than where McCaslin is actually diversifies and provides opportunity for people within SDC or Discovery to have options. And certainly, everyone's gonna be somewhere in between those two. But at least, at least that connection is there to get up and down the hill. And so we feel that it's, it's actually probably a design improvement the further it goes to the east that provides better access to at least what's there today. So I think, I don't, I don't necessarily need to go further into things right now. I think, I think Stephen's really covered it pretty well. So I would like to go ahead and open things up to questions, and Jim and I will do our best, and staff will do our best to answer.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions from any of the folks who we've heard from? Oh, I know, you're, I know you've got some, Jason.
I have a quick question. I know when you guys looked at this initially, there's that overlook out there that exists right now, the kind of picnic area, and that the original PD amendment contemplated relocating that and incorporating that in for the residents. I'm wondering where that landed, and I don't, I'm not, not sure where we're at with that one.
So that overlook today is somewhere right in there. It's obviously getting wiped out from this discussion. Currently, there is not a, a common space planned for this development. Again, it's only, it's only these ten buildings.
From a landscape perspective, I'll go on, I guess. I noticed on the landscape plan that the backyards, or at least the residential properties, are proposed to be native, irrigated native. But my concern, I guess, with that is as a homeowner, I wouldn't know, right, how to take care of a properly, you know, native landscape. I mean, is that the intent with that landscape plan? Or if it's really meant to be more naturalized, you know, it, maybe, maybe share with us a little bit more about how you, how you intend to-
Well, I think, I think lots of reasons. One, I think we're all probably in agreement that water conservation is very important, especially based on this year that we're going, going into. We've been kind of spoiled the last few years.
Sure, and the topography, right? I mean, I get it from a just topography perspective.
Then the topography, so I think it's gonna be very, I think we are gonna have to do some education of the, of the owners and explain to them why we're doing what we're doing. We still obviously want to provide them some flexibility to make improvements that they want. They can put some terracing and other things back in there. But we do want to be very specific to the owners and tell them why we're doing what we're doing for their benefit.
I'm wondering if maybe not having fences might help? I don't know, you know, I'm just wondering like from, from an expectation from a homeowner, right? If I were buying a property like this, I wouldn't know necessarily what to do with a native landscape. And if the intent really is, you know, to keep it a native landscape with taller grasses, it's not necessarily appropriate for, for dogs and playing anyway, and what the purpose maybe of fences are when-
Well, we're not necessarily prohibiting them from putting the fences up. So we're leaving that to them. If they want to come back in and apply to put a fence in, they can do that.
So then they, then they designed the fence according to the fence shown in the, in the PD, then the split rail kind of design, okay? So those aren't standard?
Actually, there is a fence proposed, not between the yards, it's only along the curve of linear backyard.
The rear property, yeah.
Right, the rear property, I thought so, yeah.
There's no, I mean, we, not saying they couldn't, but they're, we're not putting it in as part of the original.
Right. I guess I'm just wondering from either, from both like a landscape design perspective as well as from a usability perspective, if that really is native landscape? You know, if a fence is beneficial, I don't know, I'm curious on other people's thoughts on that. Maybe I'm overthinking it a little bit, but-
Anybody have any thoughts on that?
So one of my main sticking points is the, you know, we talk about each dwelling unit has four parking spots, but we all know that two cars in the garage does not, and then having two in the driveway, really, it shouldn't even be considered as meeting requirements. My family is one of those that we have four vehicles, I have two teenage drivers, and they don't park in the driveway because if I need to get out, then I have to move two vehicles to get out. And then to have guest parking on the street, and we have eight spots, is that what is proposed? Eight spots? I just see those eight spots being used up by tenant or, you know, owners or tenants of these spaces. So I, I'm having trouble understanding, you know, there's gonna be a lot of people who are gonna be trying to park up near the office buildings. And I think to think that four spots are being considered for each dwelling unit, it's, it's just kind of a mess on that, that point. I don't know, I don't see anywhere else where you could have parking, you know, on the street or on the lane, but that, that's probably one of my biggest concerns for this presentation or proposal.
I wonder if, if I can just tack onto that, you're wanting to go to four to five bedrooms?
Right.
Right? And I'm not sure who you're thinking you're gonna attract here, but you put four to five bedroom units in here, you're gonna get multifamily living in here, and you're gonna have lots of cars. And you have a, a party, there is no parking. You're not allowed to park on Discovery Parkway? I don't, I'm puzzled. I mean, I, when I think of a normal residential area, you gotta have a place to put cars. I mean, it's, it's-
One aspect of it, I mean, having, and I love the fact that you're doing this, is, you know, half of the units are gonna have the master bedroom on the main floor, and that is gonna probably lend itself more towards, you know, several elderly or even families who have elderly parents and they want to live together or whatever. And that may reduce the number of cars. And like you said, there's, you know, some days, or some of the units may have one or two cars, and others may have four or five. But I just have a feeling that there's gonna be more of the four or five versus the, the one and two.
Well, I, I think we're all kind of saying the same thing, I guess the question is to, you know, we're trying to meet the standard, and we're also trying to reduce the amount of pervious area that we have here. And so we're try, we're trying to strike that balance. And again, I do think that, you know, we're at, we're at enough numbers here of twenty of the units that we're gonna strike a balance. There's not gonna be, there's not gonna be eighteen of those people that are gonna have, wanna all have five cars. I think, you know, again, we're trying to market a little bit more to the empty nester here, more so than really not trying to market to the college student. I don't, I don't think we're gonna get a college student buying this and turning it into animal house. So I don't think that's-
I don't think they're gonna buy them, I think people are gonna buy and rent, they're gonna rent these out.
Yeah.
I mean, I would buy this as a rental, and, and I, you know, I, yeah, I, yes. No, I wouldn't expect college students to buy them, but I would expect them to be purchased and rented out, so.
And to say, I mean, even the, the ones that are just one or two people living in there, there's one or two cars, it's not like their additional parking spots are gonna be available to the other people.
Yeah.
I don't know, I look at, I look at this a little bit more like the Calmonte development, and I know that they have kind of this similar street design and similar, I mean, these don't look inexpensive to me. I mean, to me, I think this is a for-sale product that most likely would be, you know, certainly maybe some families with older kids and teenagers, that I think is a realistic scenario. But I don't know that we have a problem necessarily in Calmonte with these similar type of townhome on this similar type of private street with only a, I'm, you know, at least I haven't heard that. It doesn't seem like it's come up as an issue. So, I mean, I really appreciate the perspective of the applicant, and I agree, we don't want to overpark this thing, and we don't want a lot of drainage. There's no kind of overflow relief valve other than the office park. And so I guess maybe I would look to the owner, you know, is that something that you guys are gonna be monitoring closely, or if, you know, homeowners here know that they can overflow and have their guests park in the office lot, is that gonna be an issue for you guys?
Dan, Away to, Away to Properties, and so we've thought about that too. And a lot of the traffic at the office park today, you know, is eight to five. Then they leave, and so when people come home or have parties, they can park up at the building. We've contemplated that as, shouldn't be an issue.
Yeah, I don't want to discount it as a pro, as a possible issue, because I, what, once you build it, it's too late, right? Like, I mean, it's hard to retrofit a site plan that I think is as compact as this, but I don't know.
But there is a relief valve.
Right, and that's, I was trying, I was hoping to hear that without asking for it, right? And so-
And I, I think, I think we all want to encourage less drainage, less driving. You know, we all, we all want to imagine that these people are empty nesters or they're professionals that are walking, not driving their cars, or they're taking an autonomous vehicle to Boulder in five years. So we'd like to start pushing that direction. Any other questions?
Yeah, one of the things that I'm stuck on, I just can't get myself past this right now, is the issue of accessibility. We've been talking a lot in this commission about accessibility to our resources. And with the idea that this path, or whatever we want to call it, is not ADA accessible, I don't understand why we wouldn't want to have some way to connect this development with the town center that everyone could use. And so my question is, is if you had to put a path that was accessible or a trail that was accessible for everyone, where would that be and how would that look? Because it sounds like what's been proposed wouldn't be usable to everyone.
Well, unfortunately, we're on a hill. What's, what's our vertical gain over there? Forty feet. So, I mean, I, I think the closest thing we're gonna get to a fully accessible path is literally gonna be down the street, up the street, and, and back all the way around. Physically, to get from here to here on an accessible route would, would require a lift, would require a mechanical elevated lift of some sort to get there. There's no way unless you can imagine a zigzag, what, probably three times across the site, east-west, for us to be able to get an accessible path up there. So anything that would look like a normal path would, would, would have to have some mechanical lift to get, you'd be accessible. There's just no, there's no means to get from here to there through accessibility. But again, it's available through here, which I think is actually gonna be a little bit more level than what McCaslin is.
Yeah. However, there was an existing trail, I believe, in the- However, there was an existing trail, I believe, in the original PD or, so how are we going to accomplish that if it's not accomplishable now?
I'm sorry, one more time?
So, in, in the original PD, I think that there was this existing trail here, right?
This proposed, proposed trail, yes.
How are we going to accomplish that without having a lift and dealing with the topography?
That's why I wanted, that's why I wanted to point out that it was not ADA at that time. Staff, staff had stated that it was an ADA.
So I stated correctly that that was the intent at that time. And what Jim has clarified is that ADA standards have changed and it's been classified differently, and it would need to meet the highest ADA standards. And so what was shown in that location could no longer meet ADA accessibility. But what was, what I wanted to clarify to Planning Commission and will clarify to the board when we meet in February is that that was the intent, and that's what my job is, is to clarify what the intent of the PD was at the time and what people were considering. And one was what, what's, you know, a wider access trail, arguably a shorter access trail and a more direct access to what I understood to be the core of the town center. And so what's proposed is obviously less direct, and, and I wanted to make sure everyone knows it's bifurcated. So you'll have a pedestrian access that goes through block 25, and you'll have an ADA access that goes down the roadway. And the roadway standards are different than what a trail standard would be too, for ADA accessibility.
And, and even with this not necessarily being accessible, it was requiring some extremely tall walls to even try to make that happen. I do also want to point out that, you know, while this trail is being replaced with one through 25, you know, there still is a path provided through this lot, connects back around here and actually curves back around here to nowhere because we were required to build that years ago. But, you know, as part of the master plan, we're certainly taking on a lot of trail system within the, within the Discovery Office Park.
I think though, what did you see, wouldn't you see it as an opportunity kind of to do something for that development that would benefit the buyers of those homes, if there was a way to do that? I understand the need for walls.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, and, you know, and we started with that. We started with a pocket park here and we started with that path here. And we sat in this very same room where the members behind that counter right there told us to get rid of that path and that people would walk down McCaslin. Now, we, we were willing to get rid of it because it was problematic. We had, we had very tall walls behind here, we also had this path where we had people going behind people's property, you know, what is that fence detail, they were stuck between a fence residence and a, and an extremely tall foundation wall. We were actually concerned, you know, do we want people walking back there on that foundation area? So it had, it had a lot of, it was attractive and it's where we started. But where we've ended, we think is actually more beneficial for the center because now if you're standing here, you, you have the option to continue on McCaslin or go down here, or you have the option to come back here. And we still have a lot of population and we still have a lot of downtown coming from, coming from this area.
How do we have the option to get on McCaslin, is that, is there a trail there, is that planned?
I don't know, actually, you're right, I'm, I'm, I'm speaking at a turn, I would like to see a trail, I would like to see Old Rail continue out.
Yeah, are we doing anything?
That, that has some of the same grade constraints.
That's what I thought.
Anyways, because McCaslin is so much higher than this, than this pad site here, which we are going to be filling starting in a couple of weeks, but it's not going to come up to the level of McCaslin. So it'd be very difficult to get, you'd end up with some sort of kinky thing like this, which this is not accessible either.
Right.
But that's what you'd end up with.
Well, I know we're focused on ADA, but also just getting people walking to and from. I mean, I get that ADA may require, we have to follow the roadway in this case, but, I mean, linkages are still important whether they're ADA or not, so.
Right, so.
Otherwise, you're just going to end up with people creating social trails and social paths to get places.
So while we've clarified the connection over here to the east, the connection to the west would occur by coming back out on their first access point in Canary to that sidewalk and then getting out to McCaslin.
But then you have to go all the way down to.
Correct.
An accessible point.
Yeah, we looked at trying to get a connection more internally here, but those grades were also difficult, so.
I'm okay with the realignment and I, I understand the, the grade consideration. I do have a couple of comments I'd like to make with respect to the trail. One is where does that jog back once you're on STC property, and I know this isn't relevant tonight, but, you know, I understand there's a lot of grade there, but it might be kind of fun to, you know, do some sort of, people are going to hike, you know, they're going to drop down that, I don't know what that grade is, but to do some sort of maybe fun connection. I don't have a pointer, I don't know if you can.
Yeah, right there.
Yeah, right in there, yeah, you know, just some sort of.
This is a retaining wall.
Oh, okay, so they're not going to jump down there. Okay, never mind then, I was going to say, think through that. Okay, never mind, then that's good. But the other thing that the trail offered, I think, was the opportunity to break up the mass of, you know, this kind of row of homes along Canary Lane, and I know that, you know, kind of that. That was one of the concerns when, you know, the PD was initially approved, I think, if I remember right, which was, you know, just kind of a continuous mass along Canary Lane. And I think what we're missing in this plan is, you know, just breaking that up a little bit. I do appreciate this, you know, the play, and I think you're right, and that I'm not concerned at all about the five foot, you know, side yard setback, but I do wonder about the opportunity for a little gathering area for the residents as well as just breaking up that mass in this, in this particular design.
Yeah, I think along those lines is that this is really starting to, I mean, I can picture a bunch of people like pulling into their driveway, going into their garage, closing the garage door. Hopefully, there's a little more community feeling to that, but I think just a small community gathering point would, would really be beneficial, even if, if it's on the backside, but I, I do see a lot of people just pulling in, closing the doors and missing out on a good opportunity for the community feeling.
Yeah, and I, and I have a general issue just with the density. I, this business of putting these seven thousand, eight thousand square foot buildings, five feet, ten feet apart, I mean, no common area, I, no parking, I mean, I'm not, I mean, what was in the PD was a little bit more palatable. There's that nice opening in between the two groupings of the building, so I agree with my fellow commissioners that that's, I mean, that just seems to open it up a little bit. I, I don't see the benefit to anybody other than the developer who's making lots of money building tons of homes as dense as they possibly can, and that's all I'm seeing here, and my gut reaction is, you cram as many homes as you can in a row and you sell them and you're gone and here we go. You know, we've got another just row of homes five feet apart, and I'm frankly getting a little tired of it. But, I mean, that's my personal opinion, I, I don't consider it good planning, I don't think it looks good. I don't think it's, creates a community, doesn't create a small community, I mean, twenty home, you know, you said ten buildings, it's not ten buildings, it's twenty homes. So you're presenting it in such a way that, you know, you're trying to make me feel like it's okay to do all this stuff. And frankly, I think we got twenty homes crammed together across from an office park in hopes that there won't be a parking conflict and, you know, I, I don't know, I'm just, I'm struggling with that. I was okay with the PD kind of layout and I think you need to somehow create more parking, whether that's, whether you can do something with that, you know, eliminating one of the buildings and opening up that center area again and create some additional parking, maybe change your setbacks. I mean, I'm, I don't know, I'm, being frank with you, I'm, I'm having a hard time. I'm getting tired of this, of these, all these homes getting crammed in five feet apart and asking us to change setbacks and things that we put in place in order to make communities look nice throughout town, and so that's kind of where I am.
Maybe just for the sake of good order, let's, if we have some questions, let's raise those.
Okay.
But, but if we have all of our questions answered, then I would close the public hearing for, so that we can discuss the proposal. Does anybody have any other questions they want to raise?
I have a couple of questions just related to the detention pond design. I think viewing the model helped a lot, just some of my concern is related to, I think, kind of the, I mean, right now, it's, you know, it's very naturalized out there, right? There's a lot of stuff overgrown, a lot of stuff's coming out, I get that, we need to regrade the site. But just from a landscape design perspective, you know, there's going to be a lot of folks, you know, that's going to be their backyard, they're going to be overlooking that, and I know we need the concrete structures and I know it's hard to soften those with landscaping, but are we, are we really limited, is there anything we can do to maybe, maybe improve that? Or what do you think the vantage point really is going to be?
We're going to be able to see the concrete structures much at all from the houses because they're so far down the hill, below the retaining walls. We've got landscaping between the fence, there's a fence on top of the retaining wall because we need one for safety. There's the split rail fence on top of the hill, so you've got two fences, you've got some plantings, and then you've got tiered walls. I'm not sure you're going to be able to see them, Chase might be able to pull something up, but I'm not sure if that's even in the model. The, the geometry of the concrete structures is dictated by engineering, there's not much we could do with that, so.
No, I, I mean, that, that's helped, I mean, it assures me, I just, I think that was one of my, when you look at it in plan view, it's, you know, it would not be attractive, and I get with the grades and the model certainly helped. I guess I would just, you know, if there's any way to improve that or soften that, just make sure we're not missing, I think, an opportunity.
Coming off of Old Railway, is that a concrete, which during winter could be a luge for kids? I mean, is that a surface concrete, I mean, is that what it would be projected as?
A portion of this is, is permanent concrete ramp, the rest of this was a request from Public Works. This is a temporary gravel road to get to the end of Old Railway. So if something happens and this doesn't develop in a timely manner, the town has a somewhat improved access to the pond for maintenance. But once the street comes in, there'll be a street and that road will go away.
Okay. Oh, that, so that's not for drainage, that's actually just for access?
Okay, yeah, temporary road.
And I just have one other question regarding the ADA units that are proposed. Will those be together or will they be spread out throughout the development? And, or will they be a build as needed? Meaning if someone needs an ADA unit, would that be a demand build?
I believe all of the type two units, Jim, are potentially ADA accessible. Right, because they have the ground farm masters, so was it six? It's eight, eight of the units, eight of the twenty units could be accessible. And they are pretty well dispersed throughout the project.
So they're the type two?
Yes, yeah, and each unit has this purple line depicts an accessible route. So from each unit, every unit has a, an accessible route to the public right of way to the mailbox. So there's really no internally created restriction from ADA accessibility of the project.
And I don't know if I'm just missing it, but open space requirements for a development like that, is that listed in here and are they met? And what are the percentages?
They are calculated on one of the sheets, I can't remember off the top of my head, but I want to say it was like sixty some percent, yeah. So the open space calculation, like, the only thing it would exclude is the building footprint and then the paved Canary Lane, but everything else.
So you're, is it being calculated with lot twenty-one somehow?
Not for this FDP, no.
Okay. Detention pond, though?
Correct.
So just for my clarification, does there need to be a trail there? I don't understand why we would put a trail there in the initial PD, I'm, I'm stuck on that, I'm sorry. But then it sounds like we're creating a trail that's not ADA accessible, not really usable for people who might need wheelchairs or, or have ambulatory problems. So why would we build that? And why would we build a trail that really isn't usable for a number of people?
We do need, I mean, I mean, I don't know what the, I mean, clearly the requirement or the intent of the PD doesn't sound like it would be met with grades. Jim did a calculation, and I don't know what the total linear footage was, but it was a lot to wind, you know, an ADA accessible trail through the Uta property, which would take up most of the property, to wind it back and forth and be quite expensive in terms of retaining walls and all of that. So they worked with Ranch Capital to provide an alternative trail. That alternative trail is, I want to clarify, is conceptual at this point, you know. The one thing I do want to clarify is we're basically shifting the responsibility of that trail from one developer to the other. So when it comes in for Ranch Capital to come in and build that trail, we don't have the same teeth because it's a kind of a voluntary, you know, requirement, whereas previously, you know, we had a, you know, a trail easement that was provided through the Discovery Office Park plat. So, you know, the town's willing to consider an alternative alignment and required that they actually find one and, you know, contemplate one before we would even consider this application to go forward and just have a vacation without, without a trail being reestablished. But that, that discussion will occur when we come in with block twenty-five, and it will be, and Ranch Capital has provided it. But what I'm, I'm just as concerned about is the spacing between the trail, between the two developments. And, and, you know, on one hand, we have like, lot twenty is providing roughly a ten foot setback from block twenty-five, but then on the other side, what we're looking at now is a much shorter setback, so a much narrower space between the two structures and a much narrower trail. But all of that kind of goes towards your point of, you know, I don't know what could be developed and, you know, there's a set of three stairs just in that short segment between those two developments. You would need quite a bit more width in order to kind of meander that down and get rid of any stairs at all. I don't know that it's possible on block twenty-five, but the tightness of it that it's designed at now almost necessitates more stairs. I don't know that you can get rid of them to begin with, I mean, at all, but, you know, it could be, you know, there could be less, less stairs involved with a wider easement or whatever.
Do we have a current easement through lot twenty-five from the town now?
No.
So the current.
It'll be established when we do the, the FDP in the plat for block twenty-five.
I'm sorry.
It'll need to be established when we do the FDP in the plat for block twenty-five.
Where we would have some teeth.
Yeah, I mean.
If we leave it the way it is, I mean, if we.
Correct, we'll, we'll do that review through a, a normal review, but it is, there is a slight nuance of a difference as to where we have established easement within the Discovery Office Park that's being requested to be vacated, and we have no easement currently established in block twenty-five, which will just need to be established. They'll need to establish some sort of trail, you know, through block twenty-five anyway, and we discussed connection points and all that, but now it's serving both developments versus just what would normally be necessitated or required for the development within block twenty-five.
Okay.
So Stephen, help, help me, because I'm, I'm struggling too now with this. So when the PD was approved, we all thought it would be pretty cool to have a trail there. But then, now that we've actually looked at constructing one, we're determining that's really not feasible to have a trail there.
No, it's not ADA, it wouldn't be feasible to put an ADA.
Correct, it could be feasible to build a.
We could put a trail down there.
Correct.
It's just not, it's not going to be ADA.
ADA compliant trail.
And I don't have a problem with a trail that's not ADA compliant, as long as there's an ADA compliant way to get into town center, which there is, because the streets connect and.
Correct.
We would end up having that. I, I'd love for us to figure out if we could come up with an ADA trail that's shorter. It's sounding like it's a big effort.
Well, so let me go back, so are we now kind of just pushing for this one trail on the, on the end there just because, kind of, because we had an original plan that called for a trail and we're not willing to give it up? I mean, do we have to stick with a trail, does it make sense even to have one if it, if it's not?
Connectivity is always our desired goal, I mean, some sort of connectivity, whether or not it's pedestrian or ADA. I mean, I, obviously, we, we shoot for more, and if all, all we can get on this is the, the pedestrian connectivity, then that's what we'll get. But we're, what I want everyone to understand is just the, the level of that, you know, connection and the standards that were in place for the PD versus what's being proposed. And, and that, we are narrowing that trail connection and we are changing it in terms of, you know, it's similar to what Lisa is, was commenting on about having the, that, that trail connection was through that common open space before. Now we don't have common open space, we have, we'll have an outlot within block twenty-five that accommodates the trail. But it is different in configuration than what was contemplated and shown through the PD or through the plat that was done for the Discovery Office Park area.
All right. I'd like to add one, one thing to this. If, if we did have a trail and we, if we did put it back in the project in somewhat this condition, configuration, it would still end up in this point, and the only logical point for it to continue from at this point from a grade perspective would be to come right to here. So if there's a trail here or not a trail here, it's still going to go to this point because this is really the only place it can go on block twenty-five. So if there's a trail here or not a trail here, it's still gonna go to this point because this is really the only place it can go on block 25 from a great perspective. It can't go that way.
Is there a common area? I mean, I know in some developments we have a common area and parks required. Is this too small to have that requirement?
We would for a, I mean, I, I didn't see it in the, in the PD. There was a requirement for a tot lot or a park or anything like that. There was the common lot that was kind of shown as being included, so I guess you can consider it being not included in this application. And I think that's part of the, the question too, is that, you know, the applicant is, you know, envisioning this as an extension of the town center. And it, it kind of will appear that way, you know, in terms of location and the connection, connectivity to Canary Lane. But it is subject to an entirely different PD that had its own standards and, you know, originally was an office development. And now it has this residential aspect. So, I mean, it's certainly something I can look into more and kind of try to calculate whether or not. I didn't see anything that said a specific allowance for it. I mean, it was shown on the plan, but it wasn't said as like, we need, you know, quarter acre for, or, you know, whatever for common open space.
Well, I mean, our land use code and our design standards, I mean, where we kind of start from with, with the PD, I mean, we look to those to give us guidance.
Right.
Right, when we're, when we're.
When we're, when we're starting that new.
I get, I get that they can do, we can do whatever we want in a PD, not whatever, but, you know.
We have flexibility, yeah.
We have a lot of flexibility, but we start with what our town guidelines and land use code are. Those are the documents we have to start from. So, and I, I thought there were some things in there related to, to parks and common areas, but.
There are.
Yeah.
I just didn't see anything specific related to what was adopted for this PD in terms of open space related to like a community gathering space.
Okay.
So it was all encompassing within the open space requirement.
Got it.
We can pull up that PD though, if you want to look at it any closer.
Okay.
Any other questions, or did you want to do that, Bob?
We can do that in discussion, probably.
So then I just have, I know I said I had one last question, but now I really have one last question. So what would it look like to remove the five-foot side setbacks and extend that to 10 feet? Which is what I think I heard was originally slated for in the PD.
So, you know, increasing, as I said, it's about, it's, it's about seven feet again from these decks, entrance decks to entrance decks. It's an average of just under 20 feet between the buildings, if you take that average across there. If we were to increase the setback by basically three feet on each side of the property, it would, it would probably result in losing a unit somewhere across the, the calculation of.
Losing a unit?
Or a building.
A building.
Or, or we would potentially look at, you know, tweaking these entrance elements to make them smaller. Yeah, we, I'd have to go back and see. We might, we, we might be, we might be forced to kind of shave this entrance element so that it would, its overhang is less and, and actually probably be able to keep the building envelopes the way they're at. So it may not result in anything as far as a replat, as much as it's just trimming the architecture back.
Okay. And so my follow-up question then is what would it look like to remove one of those units altogether and go from 18, from 20 to 18?
I, I think you know it's gonna, it's gonna result in, in a larger splay between the units, or it's gonna result in larger units. If we have, if we, if we were to lose one of these buildings, we would then be looking at potentially flattening these buildings out, looking at a, at a wider, a wider building. That would be another potential.
But it would address the issue of the five-foot side setback, though?
Correct.
Okay.
One little comment on architecture while we're talking architecture. Duplex style two. Just would love to see a little architectural element kind of in the center of these two buildings. I really like what you've treated on the corners and the ends and in the rear of the building, I think looks great. There's tons of articulation and detail. I think the only part of the actual home itself, I don't have a pointer, would be, right, yep, just, yep, kind of in there. Yep, some sort of, I don't know, additional roof element, window element, another, you know, extension of a pergola or something. Just particularly in the, you know, just a little bit of an opportunity. But other than that, I think the architecture of the home itself is, is really good. But since we do have such a mass of buildings, I think the, you know, curvilinear street helps, you know, with that. But that's my only concern related to architecture.
And you can see we tried to break that up with the gable forms and the shoulders with the, with the protruding entrance pieces.
Right.
That's fair.
Any other questions? Okay. Well, I don't think we have anybody from the audience here who has any comments, so that's right.
Can I make a final comment here?
Yes, please.
I want everyone to understand a little bit of, more of context here. There was some discussion of amenities and other things. I want everyone to understand that there's a lake planned here. There's an entire trail system that connects this, this lot into, into Rock Creek. So we're seeing, we're seeing a tweener project here. We're seeing something that is happening because the rest of town center is happening. And I want everyone to understand that there's another PD here that addresses a lot of open space. There's ponds and trails and other things there. I also want people to understand that the density we're here, we're looking here is fractional in comparison to what you're looking at to the east. And so, back to my initial comment, I think, I think, I think we're actually doing quite the opposite of the greedy developer. We're actually opening these up. We're trying to provide something that's very livable and much more accessible than some of the density of alley-loaded, three, four-story product that's right across from each other. And that this is gonna be a relief in comparison to some of those approvals that are made here. And then I also want to remind everyone the developer here is not the developer. The developer is the landowner who's owned this parcel before most of Rock Creek was developed. And we've all been the beneficiaries of having this as open space for a long time. And, and as stewards of that, we are doing our best to develop that as responsibly as we possibly can.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Go ahead and close the public hearing. And discussion. Who wants to go first?
Well, I think for me, you know, Commissioner McCool was talking about the massing and the, the density of this project and, and kind of echo what you just said is that I think my, my thought of this entire area of Superior was gonna have extreme density in the core. And as it moved out, it was gonna get, become less and less dense. And I do believe that, you know, the way that these duplexes are laid out, they are less dense. They're not nearly as tall as any of the other buildings that are in the immediate area. And I think that, you know, from a design aspect, I think that they did a, did a really good job. The five-foot setback, originally when I, because I typically go through and read staff's comments first. And then I go through the, you know, the program and try to figure out, you know, what my thoughts are on that. And I know that, you know, right away I went to the, you know, if the narrowest spot is five feet and all of these dwellings are on angles, there's gonna be a much wider spot. And at some point, they're gonna exceed. And at what point on most of these dwellings would it exceed that 10, 10-foot setback or meet the 10-foot setback or at least be close? And it seems like on all of them, you know, without having the ability to get on AutoCAD and measure it out and understand the distance, I feel like it, it meets those. It is, but as they stated, it's, you know, there's that five to seven foot range right there. And they could go in and shave off the front porch to get it to that point, which I think would be a disaster just to get it, you know, to meet our setback requirements. But overall, I think that it's a, it's a good proposal. I still have concerns about even putting the, the walkway between dwelling number 20 and lot 25. It's gonna be a heavily shaded area with stairs. And during the winter, it's gonna be, it's just inviting disaster. So those are, those are my two biggest issues and along with the parking. So hopefully, we will have a lot of one and two-car people living in the area and we won't have an issue. But if we do have any overflow needs, it sounds like they should be able to utilize the commercial parking area.
Who wants to go next?
Well, I, I agree with.
I'm sorry. I agree with some of that. I was also initially kind of impressed that we were decreasing density as what had been originally proposed. And taking the number of units down from what was originally being asked for to the current proposal of 20, I was applauding that. As I looked more at the whole diagram and this whole development, it, it started to look like things were more smashed together and that you were trying to kind of get a lot of density into a small space. Some of the comments about needing a park and some open spaces for some of these homes, I, I certainly agree with. And think that, you know, it would make this development much more attractive for people coming in to buy these places if there was a small park or some smaller, some open spaces and gathering places for people. Which is kind of why I brought up the question of getting rid of one of the units to go in from 20 to 18. Because you do get a little bit more space that way. You get this, get a little more space between these units and make them feel more like, you know, homes than apartments, you know, which is what it kind of feels like when they're so closely related. So that's, that's initial, that was my initial thoughts about that as well. So, you know, I, I, I hear you and I, you know, want to commend the developer for trying to get density down. But I don't think that it's accomplished in this case. I think it's kind of stuck in there. And there's as much as you can get on that, that parcel of land. And I, I'm gonna go back to the trail. I, I don't understand why we would want to put a trail that really isn't gonna be usable. I think that the, the question about vacating that needs to, some more discussion. Because it, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't seem like it serves its purpose. So that's, that's kind of where I am right now.
Yeah, I'm looking at the grading plan a little bit and I'm, I'm thinking about this trail connection as well. And, and I appreciate what, you know, Jim Brostovich said, which is, you know, even if we had brought the trail through here, which could be, you know, a little more pleasant grade and you could eliminate these stairs here. But ultimately, it's still gonna kind of, just from the grades, which, you know, is still gonna kind of lead back to the same point. And from there, rely on, you know, the town center developer to incorporate it in some manner. So I also appreciate, you know, I go back and forth, you know, I have a trail, you know, behind my house, but not immediately behind my house. And how would I feel if I had a trail immediately, you know, behind my house here? I don't know. I don't, I don't have a lot of heartburn, I guess, with relocating it, you know, essentially from back here to here if we really can't get, you know, I think what we initially had contemplated, which was, you know, a better direct connection here. And, yeah, I'm torn on that one. I, what I don't, what I do miss on this, though, I think, is that gathering space for the residents. And, yeah, I, I don't know. Again, same thing. This is more urban in scale. I think overall, I think the development proposal, like you said, is a good transition from, you know, urban town center core to, you know, kind of transitioning out into, you know, it's gonna feel a little bit kind of part of Rock Creek, kind of part of original. I mean, it's around, it's got a lot more going on around its edges, so I think it's a good balance. I don't know, I'm torn on the trail from a connectivity perspective too. And to your point, if it's just gonna be icy in the winter all the time, that's not a, you know, it's not a good safety thing too, so I don't know.
Thanks, Lisa.
Sure. So I appreciate some of the comments at the end, that, you know, you've, you've, you're, you're up against density at town center and this is a little bit more open. I'll, I'll ease up a little bit on, on my density issue. But I do feel like the, the overall, this is too dense. And the, you know, hadn't really occurred to me that this, I mean, that, that the, the entire development, the office park and the open space and the ponds are accessible to, to folks there. That makes me feel a little, a little bit better, so thank you for pointing that out. That really wasn't clear for me. I'm still, you know, this idea of 2,000 to 4,000 square foot homes making, you know, an 8,000, you know, somewhere between a six and 8,000 square foot building footprint with somewhere between five and seven feet or, no, I guess it's, that's to the lot line, right? So somewhere between 10 and 14 feet between the units. It just feels like a lot. And to have no common area, it seems like a problem. I'm actually more concerned about parking. I mean, I, I sort of get the, you know, sure, the parking's available from the office complex, that's great. If there's a big party, people have a place to go. But day to day, I think that's just gonna be a fight. And I'm trying to reconcile that against wanting another bedroom, right? So originally, these were three-bedroom units. Now they're four and five-bedroom units. And, you know, if you've got four or five bedrooms, you're gonna have eight. Probably, yeah, and you're probably gonna have seven, eight people. There's at least one couple in there, more, more than likely, you know? And if you're sharing this thing, which I'm, I'd be shocked if these weren't rented, if these weren't purchased and rented out, you know, being as close as they are to town center. I'm struggling with the parking. Also get frustrated when, I mean, you know, trustee steward asked, what if you took away one of the buildings? And then the immediate response was, we'd probably make them bigger. You know, that, I'm, I'm struggling with, with this, right? I mean, we're not, we're not asking to take a building out so that you can make the buildings bigger and somehow lessen the density by 50% instead of 100% that we wanted. I don't know if that makes sense. But you know what I mean? You take out a building, the, the idea is keep the building footprint you have and take a building out and let's see how this thing looks. And so all that just concerns me. It, it seems just so much about creating as much home as we can stuff in there to make as much money as we possibly can. And we have, I mean, this is our job, right? This is, you know, we have design standards, we have land use code that we start from to create these, to, to help guide us in, in these PDs and, and, and development plans. And we don't have to, you know, we, we, we don't have to permit a five-foot setback. I mean, we, we can require a 10-foot setback. We can require that there's a farther distance from McHastlin Boulevard. That's gonna be a problem for that person. I'm sorry. There's too many cars coming down McHastlin, right? That first unit's just gonna suck for whoever, whoever lives there, you know? My sister just, they just bought a home down in Skystone, almost similar. They're up on a hill. Man, I just, just play ball with, with the guy on the deck next door. I mean, it's, and yours is right there. I'm looking right down and, you know, in, in, in people's homes. And I, you know, these, these, putting these homes this close together, you know, just, it, it is a concern. You know, when they're townhomes like they are and right, right in downtown and they're smack up against each other, they're built that way, right? These are more designed to be a little more open and give you views out the back. So I'm, I mean, I like the idea of this. I don't have an issue with the duplexes. I mean, I'll get over the size. I, I guess that's what people want. That's bothering me, but that's, that I can get over. But, but the lack of parking, the lack of a common area, I agree with trustee steward. If we can figure out a way to, you know, get better connectivity down to town center, that would be great. But I also understand that the gray. that would be great, but I also understand that the grades may not allow us to, to do that on that back hill. So, I, I'm not quite in favor of what I see yet, it's kind of close, but, I don't know, that's where I'm at.
I'm wondering from a landscape perspective, I'm gonna look to our landscape guy down on the end there, the native landscaping on the residential lots? Is that, you know, if I, I don't know, like, if I bought a house with native landscaping, I wouldn't know what to do with it. Like, I'd mow it down and then, I mean, I don't know, you know? Is it usable?
No, I didn't, and I'll admit, I didn't get to the landscape part of it. I got eleven pages in and-
Right.
Wasn't able to review it. I would have to review it a lot more just to be able to speak to that, but-
And from like, and if we really are concerned that the soils there shouldn't take that much water from the turf perspective, then that's fine. I like that from a water perspective and then is the fence back there really necessary? I don't know if, you know, it's not a usable area, anyway.
And how do you manage that in a duplex too? That's kind of weird, right? I mean, how do you manage your, I mean, unless you put a fence down the middle, right? It's, it's, one guy wants turf and the other, the other person wants-
Right, native.
Native, and how do you reconcile that too?
Anybody else?
When, when we're looking at this and we're talking about trying to change the setbacks or add common space or, you know, a pathway and then talking about density, I was, I was just thinking, when, when they're going through the presentation, I was like, you know, if two of these units turned into triplexes, you know, would that allow for, but then, you know, it changes, it changes the whole game for the design concept and everything, but I think doing something like that would allow more room to be able to, I mean, you're gaining twenty-eight, only twenty-eight feet, I think, you know, by doing that, so, I don't know, I was just brainstorming, trying to figure out, you know, how, you know, from a density standpoint, keeping the same footprint of each of those buildings, you know, or I guess square footage, not a footprint, but it's the only way I can see without removing, you know, one set of duplexes.
Yeah, I mean, and it's also hard, I mean, I'm not, do we, do we know what the product is on town center just beyond Lot twenty?
On Lot twenty-five?
Is that, is that, is that Lot twenty-five?
Just to the east?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, so, it's a townhome product that's being proposed. It's, I mean, so there's a single family residence along Promenade or, and similar to-
So, right, right there next to Lot twenty-
Along Discovery Parkway and then also a single family residence similar to what we have approved on Block thirteen.
But is that like a four story, single family-
Three stories.
Residence or are these, are like they have done by town center?
Three stories with rooftop element to them, yeah. So, they're, I mean, this parcel is allowed up to fifty feet of height on Block twenty-five, similar to Block thirteen. And the developers are comparable. It's Remington who's developing the townhome product on Block thirteen, the internal townhome product, that's coming in for this development. And then they also are the ones that are doing the single family homes along Superior Drive that wrap around to, to Village Green. I can pull up a map if you wanna see where they are in greater context.
If that wouldn't be too hard, that, I mean, it might, it might ease my concern about the size and density of what's there. I mean, it's, you know-
So, this is Block thirteen over here.
Yep.
The Remington product that's internal to here is very comparable to what's the townhome product that's kind of shown here and then internally to Block twenty-five. The single family homes that are on Village Green that are being built here right now, but the first one's actually built on Superior Drive, so just south of the Sports Stable, there's a single family home, if you've been over there, there's only one I, I know of that's been built so far, but those will be along Village Green here as well, so that'll be the same product that's across the street and across Promenade and then it'll wrap here. I don't recall the heights of these offhand, but I think they're around forty-five feet and then these are a little bit smaller, they're closer to forty feet in height, the townhomes, if they're the same as, they're a little bit different design, but they're fairly comparable to the townhomes that are proposed or already being built within Block thirteen.
So, three to four, four story?
Three to, I mean, they do have, some of them do have a rooftop element, the houses definitely do. I'm not sure that a rooftop element, I'm, I'm misremembering or I'm not, I've seen too many development plans lately.
And what's the grade, what's the grade change there from that last-
From here?
Yeah.
Jim would be able to respond to that better than I can, but it does drop off significantly downhill this direction and downhill-
That direction, okay.
Old railway. So, this is kind of the peak point and then it drops off this direction and it drops off as you go down the hill.
All right. Okay.
There's only one other little caveat that kind of wrinkle to the whole open space development question and accessibility down here. So, you know, as the Discovery Office Park is currently proposed or, you know, was originally designed was, you know, for office buildings and for one owner, so I'd have to look into the easements and whatnot that are in place for that trail to know whether or not individual property owners to the north here actually have access to the, the office space development to the south, which is, I understood for, you know, common ownership within, but it's no longer gonna be common ownership, so there is that caveat there. I mean, if, if, if we're deferring either parking or open space requirements to the south, we'd need easements in order to make sure that they're actually there.
Cause that could change with ownership, right?
That will change with ownership, yeah, so.
That gets, well, and even the existing building, if that changes ownership, that could go away, I mean-
If this, yeah, I mean, I assume, yeah, I mean, if these all get broken up, there would need to be-
If there isn't, if there isn't an easement in place-
Yeah, if there's not an easement in place, yeah.
Got it.
I hear bedrooms and I think of more cars and parking and I can't get rid of that lot. I live in a complex where the, you know, concept of parking outside your garage and all this kind of stuff, it doesn't work. That's my, my biggest concern about this.
Is the parking?
Yeah, I mean, I just don't see it working, four or five bedrooms, three, four cars, they can have a shuffle every day, they're gonna be cursing, cursing all the time.
Yeah, I mean, if they were smaller units with two bedrooms or three bedrooms and they were geared towards-
Yeah.
An average family, right?
The empty nester, right?
Or an empty nester or a small family, maybe, but, you know, that would also allow for more parking, but these are big, these are big.
I, I like the architecture, I like the design, I like the whole concept that opposed to you guys. You're gonna have a problem with parking, big time. It's, it's not gonna fly. People aren't gonna park across the street in the office building, they're gonna park on Discovery Parkway and leave their cars there. It's gonna be, parking's gonna be a problem. I can see, you know, maybe you have a valet, you can pull up to your house and have the valet take the car up to the parking lot, but parking's gonna be a problem. That, the path going out the back, I'm, I, I don't miss, I don't think there's space for it. The, the elevation is just wrong. The streets are connective, so there's your connectivity is, is go down the streets. I mean, the, the drop off there is just too severe. Again, in the wintertime, as Commissioner Reese mentioned, it's gonna be an icy mess back there. I am sad there's no common area, I agree with my commissioners with that, but there's no space for it. I think the, the design of the units, how they're placed is, is what has to happen, I just think the parking's gonna be a real big issue.
Fellas, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I, I agree with a lot that's been said. I am concerned about the four and five bedrooms, is that, that's a huge, huge building. The parking, again, I agree with, I think it is gonna be a problem. People will park wherever they can find a place to park and they don't, they don't care if they get a ticket and they will continue to do that, so that's a couple of my concerns in the common area. We always seem to have a, you know, some kind of a little tot lot or something. I mean, if we're talking about little kids, I guess they don't need it, but who knows? We don't know who's gonna buy them with four and five bedrooms. They could have four kids ranging in all kinds of ages, so those are my concerns.
Well, I guess I'll go last. At the risk of getting crossways with any of you, because I admire and respect you all and you have great opinions, I, I feel like we gotta be careful not to overstep our role as a commission. And by that, what I mean is, you know, I look at a proposal like this and ask myself, generally, does it comply with what's required? If it does, subject to a couple of small variances, does it look okay? I mean, is it something that we would feel good about seeing on that, on that plot of land? And I think, personally, I think these folks have done a pretty darn nice job of preparing some really beautiful renderings and, you know, good design with a very challenging parcel. And, you know, I'm sensitive to all of the issues you guys have identified about, you know, developers kind of cutting and running and squeezing profits out and that sort of thing, but, you know, we know this landowner. I mean, they've been great stewards of this parcel for a lot of years and great friends of the community. And I, I remember when we did the development plan on this thing and I don't really see anything being presented that is very different from kind of the direction we gave them. I understand the point about the pocket park and all of that and I think that's, those are really valid points, but I also kind of see, I mean, it overlooks the town center itself, which is sort of the ultimate community meeting area right there. I don't know if it is really all that necessary to have another one right outside your doorstep. The trail, I, I guess I would say, don't waste money on that. I mean, it seems like that's a remnant of a prior time that was a good idea at the time or it seemed like it, but on closer examination, it doesn't seem like it really makes a lot of sense, given the challenges of that lot. So, I think if I had to identify any concerns, it would be the shared concern that you all articulated about the parking and the number of, the number of bedrooms, it would seem to invite a parking problem. But beyond that, I, I mean, I look over at the, at the proposal overall and it looks to me like they frankly have done a pretty good job. So, I don't know where this leads us. I mean, we can't move forward unless we have, you know, some consensus on, on adopting this, you know, maybe, maybe the path is to make a suggestion that we look at other parking options to address some of those concerns. Maybe if that correlates with some of these bedroom issues that people have identified, I mean, I don't, you know, when I hear four and five bedroom, I'm thinking, well, one of them's probably gonna be a study or a loft or something like that, I mean, that's usually how this goes. So, I don't, I don't know that you're gonna get like a lot of people in those, those homes and as far as kind of the high density concerns, I mean, these look like pretty upscale units to me. I mean, I, I don't know what the price point on something like that would be, but I know what they're selling for in Calmonte and it's not inexpensive at all, so I don't really see that turning into a, you know, these turning into tenements or anything like that, so. Those are my two cents worth, folks. I mean, I, I, I think it's good that we give people good constructive feedback, but I, I wouldn't wanna discourage anybody to the point where they don't wanna keep working on this, because I think when you look at what we could end up with there versus what they're proposing, to me, this is a pretty nice, I mean, it's a pretty nice transition from office to high density. So, those are my two cents worth.
And I think those are spot on, just because, you know, and I'll speak for myself, a lot of my concerns are in opposition, right? I think that, looking at it, I agree, I think it's a great presentation, a great product. We just kind of throw out realities, what we can see and then ultimately, it's up to the consumer. If people, you know, if people don't wanna deal with a parking issue or a potential parking issue, then they're gonna pass, but there'll be people who will decide that, you know, I'm willing to do that. People who look at it and say, you know what, the pocket park doesn't matter, so this is a property for me. So, I think that for me, it's, I'm not in opposition to this, I think it's a great, great potential, you know, product and, and I just, you know, I kind of voice what I've, you know, seen throughout all of Superior, right? What, you know, a lot of the issues that are brought up and just wanna make sure that it's voiced and, and like I said, it's not an opposition, it's just more of the, you know, concerns reflected from what we've seen.
To me, I think you put your finger on it, Jason. I think that's where I'm getting sensitive to, there's a real temptation when you're sitting up here to sort of substitute our views for, you know, what would I wanna buy, you know, versus what does this owner want to put out on the market based on their research that they think will sell? I mean, it probably wouldn't hit all of the boxes that I would wanna check, you know, at, at this stage of life, if I was in the market to buy something. But just looking at it from the standpoint of, okay, does it generally comport with what we, what we're requiring? Yeah, I think it kind of does. I mean, now, I don't know about the parking issue. I mean, I, I don't know if that's something where we can or should draw the line and say, guys, you gotta come back with something that's more rational for parking. I mean, if that's what we need to do, that's what we need to do, but, I mean, I'm, I'm sympathetic to our, our folks here who, who put together this, this proposal and this presentation, because I think, I, I'm just reluctant to kind of pull the rug out from under them when I think they've come back with something that is a pretty, overall, it's a pretty nice, pretty darn nice project. Those are my thoughts. So, where does that leave us? What do you all wanna do?
The park, you know, it is elevated, so the fact that there's no connection has to be expected. I mean, you wanna be higher up and have a view, you may, you lose some connection, so I don't really see that as a big problem. I think it's well done, I just have one, have one little issue.
In staff's opinion, do you feel like the PD, or the FDP from parking complies with PD? I know you did a little bit of an analysis in your staff report and my apologies, I can't remember. You feel like we're okay from a-
So, the PD only contemplated three bedrooms-
Right.
And it contemplated less parking, that's all it kind of highlighted for you. The parking thing is a, you know, kind of, you can address it a number of different ways, but I think you guys are hitting on the issue is, you know, you're gonna have the same amount of parking spaces and that's what I kind of tried to clarify is that, you know, if these are three bedroom units, you're probably gonna get four offsite parking spaces and four offsite parking spaces for three bedroom units is clearly sufficient, but when you get four or five bedroom units, four parking spaces becomes more of an issue, so. And what I tried to highlight too in the staff recommendation and we've had discussions and, you know, provided the applicant with feedback on the, you know, the arrangement of the units. They have more of their larger units, more of the five bedroom type unit proposed than they do with the four bedroom type unit and that would, you know, a different ratio of those would also change kind of parking and then also address the, the separation things cause they're narrower by about fourteen feet, so.
Is there opportunity to, I know we've got kind of the parking pullouts here and here, is there opportunity to include another parking pullout for maybe three or four spaces on this end of the Canary Lane?
We looked at that as well and the topography makes that difficult, so, just because of the grade- So just because of the grade change, my understanding, between Discovery Lane and Canary Lane, there already is a retaining wall in order to get that turnaround in there. So it wasn't seen as, as feasible. And we wanted that turnaround. That was staff-driven to get that turnaround included in there. So.
So I think what, what's, I do appreciate what Commissioner Sotell was saying. I, when I see a plan come forward and everything's pushing the limits, that just raises a big red flag. It makes me think, what, what's going on? Why are we going from three bedrooms to five bedrooms, right? Why, why are we eliminating the, the central area? Why, you know, and so I, and I'm, and I apologize, but my money, my, my head goes to money, you know. It's, that's just where my head goes. Maybe I'm wrong. Maybe that's not their intent. But, you know, you're selling bigger units with more bedrooms. So I think we have a responsibility as a commission to consider what's being put in front of us. And I think our staff pointed out some of the issues that they have. And I'm okay if we can correct those issues. I, I, I agree with those issues. I, but I get concerned because if it's the same footprint, the same square footage, and we say, no, only three bedrooms, that just means they're gonna make it a den, you know, and it's gonna be a bedroom next month. And that concerns me. That, it, it, it worries me about what the intent is, you know, for the development. And so I don't wanna pull the rug out from under them either. But don't shove three rugs at me either, you know, and that's, and, and there's gotta be some give and take here. It's, it's, it's more than what we expected, right? It's, it, I would've felt a whole lot better if this were just three bed, sorry. If this were just three-bedroom units that come back to us, the square footage was reasonable, the setbacks were there. You know, I probably wouldn't have cared. I could've been convinced. And I, we can pull the common space away. I'm hearing, sure, downtown's right there. I, I can get over some of those. But there's, there's a concern that a lot's been shoved at us here that we did, you know, that wasn't expected. That's all. That raises a red flag for me. I'd love to come up with some recommendations that we can send back and, you know, maybe keep this thing moving. I don't wanna, like I said, I don't wanna pull the rug out either. So.
It sounds, it sounds to me like the, the number of bedrooms in the parking are really, when we get right down to it, those are the two that we are all...
But that's what creates the size of the units and the density, right? That, that's, that's what made this thing, like Commissioner Stewart said, all compact. I mean, they're bigger. They're, I mean, and I can't tell for sure. I can't remember the PD. I think I was here when that, when that PD came through years ago. But when I even looked at it, when it went by, it was, and maybe we should bring it up again. It just seemed, I don't know, a little more open and a little less dense and...
Can we see, let's see the PD?
It's shown here, but we can pull up the whole PD too. So there was a group of 10 units on one side and a group of 12 on the other. But in order to fit, you know, the footprints, there are obviously, or this amount of units within the same amount of space, the footprints were obviously smaller.
Right, yes.
And then that central area or that common space was incorporated along what was proposed for the trail.
And there was no definition of what these units were gonna look like, how many bedrooms or anything, right?
Just the three, I mean, it did say three bedrooms.
It did say three bedrooms, yeah. Square footage, they had to be smaller.
There was nothing about the square footage, but yeah.
Where, where do you see the three-bedroom?
I don't remember. It's on this sheet or the other sheet. There you go. So residential parking, three spaces for three bedrooms. 22 units were proposed at that. Nothing smaller and nothing larger.
One, two, and three-bedroom units, and now it's four and five-bedroom?
Well, it was, I mean, they showed those for context, but the only thing that was proposed, the only number that's filled in is the, is the 22 for the three-bedroom.
So you got three bedrooms, 22 units, so 66 bedrooms in the whole development. And now what, what, how many bedrooms if we were to total up?
Four to five at 20, so.
We have 88 parking spaces. Or 88, 88 parking spaces?
Right, but we have...
Eighty, eighty bedrooms at four.
Eighty bedrooms.
Hundred at five, so somewhere between 80 and 100 bedrooms, yeah.
Right.
But the ratio is still the same as what was in here, right? Because they increased...
The parking ratio?
I mean, like the overall, right, I mean...
No, I think, well, I think what Commissioner Sotell's question is, is how many bedrooms are we going from?
Yes, we're going up to more bedrooms, but then Lisa's saying that we, we have the same ratio of parking spaces.
Well, kind of by default. So the requirement for parking spaces for, you know, was, they're showing us three. So there's three parking spaces provided or required for a three-bedroom unit. But you're really gonna, you're not gonna provide a single...
Half a driveway.
Yeah, or a tandem garage, you know, like those aren't very likely. So you're generally gonna build four spaces for those three bedrooms. But the requirement is three and the requirement for, basically this defaults to the town code. Because it, you know, when you don't have a PD that addresses it, the town code requirement for either four bedrooms or five bedrooms is only three and a half spaces per, per unit. So. Nobody builds a half parking space, fortunately. So.
So I do agree with you. I, I think the elements of this FDP are met. And I agree with the other commissioners. I mean, I like the product, the, you know, I like the architecture, like the style of the homes, and I like the proposal. I also like the fact that, and wanna appreciate the fact that this is a hard-to-develop piece of land and trying to get anything on there, you know, based on the topography and the, the grades that are being dealt with is difficult. So I do wanna appreciate that. I, I think too that we have a responsibility though, as a commission, to help this developer be successful in this, in this product. And I think some of the things that are being pointed out are, hopefully, the developer will find helpful. I'd also kinda like to see kind of a willingness to kinda look at some alternatives because I think that there are a number of issues here that might be a little bit overwhelming. And we just have to be careful about pushing something through that we first doesn't, don't think fit with, fits with the overall feel of our community. And two, be careful about what we are allowing and setting a precedent for, for future developments.
I wanna just make an attempt at moving us forward a little bit. Does anybody have any proposed conditions if we were to move forward that they'd like to maybe begin thinking about? I don't particularly have any. I'm comfortable with the, I think the discussion around letting go of the common area open space, I think is, is reasonable. The proximity to the town center, I think that's fine. If and when the rest of the office park development, you know, access to that could be good. I'd like to just make sure that maybe whatever kind of building soils reports or foundation structural plans don't preclude someone installing a turf yard. Should they want to just do turf, irrigated turf in their backyard, you know, just from a homeowner perspective, just make sure we're not precluding that as an option, I think. Other than that, I agree with Commissioner Sotell. I think this meets the standards. And I don't have a problem with the five-foot setback exception, and I'm, I'm comfortable moving forward.
What do you guys think? Do we wanna put some, wanna put some conditions on this? How do you wanna, how do you wanna proceed?
I'd support Commissioner Ritchie's comments in moving this forward. I think the, we could also vacate the, the trail that was proposed earlier. The, the side yard setbacks and setback from McCaslin, could leave those out or vacate them however we do that. I, I would, I would make, the only caveat I would make is to, to ask the developer and ask the property owner to reconsider the parking situation on Canary Lane or Canary Way to see if there's any way you can carve out more spaces out there. Because that, I mean, that's the only spot for it. You, you look at this old illustration and there's no parking out there. Very little. Maybe there's, there's units, yeah, right there. See, that's one long, open. The, the one that we're proposed, that we're looking at today, it only has spaces for like three or four vehicles. Yeah, we could extend that down, down the way and get five or six more vehicles in there. Everything would help.
Yeah, I would agree with that if there's opportunity to just make sure we're maximizing that.
Carve out another six feet.
Bob, what do you think?
I don't think there's enough parking. I think four to five bedrooms is too much. I politely disagree that we have some responsibility because of a person, a particular parcel of land that somebody bought god knows how long ago, that we have to go out of our way to accommodate the biggest thing they wanna put on there. I, I struggle with that. I don't feel that's our responsibility to be accommodating to that. I mean, if we can and it works, then I, I'm all for it. But just because, just because they own that land and they wanna put 8,000, 7,000 square-foot buildings on it that somehow we have to accommodate that, I'm struggling, really struggling. You could put smaller units, two- and three-bedroom units. You could accommodate the parking because you'd have more land left to park those cars. But instead, we are talking about accommodating 7,000 square-foot buildings, two to 4,000 square-foot homes, because that's what the developer wants on a piece of land that they bought and they own. And we didn't, I, so all due respect to the, to the owner and the developer of the land, that's not our problem. And, and if parking is an issue, the only way to get parking is to create more land. The only way to create more land is to put smaller buildings on the unit, or on the land. So I, you guys sound like you're all in favor of it. That's cool. That, it'll probably push through. I'm just, the more I think about it, the more, and the more I hear, you know, comments, the more I'm looking at this going, why are we responsible for having a developer, accommodating a developer to put a 7,000 square-foot building in a place where it doesn't work? Why can't it be a 5,000 square-foot building duplex? I, so I'm, and I don't, I mean, I know they put a lot of work into this. I, I do. And I have respect for that, but that can't sway what is required in order to accommodate what we believe is, is a proper building for that parcel of land. So, I mean, I'll just respectfully, you know, disagree and we'll probably just vote against this. Not that it doesn't, I, I don't think it does meet requirements. I, I just don't. I, I don't, I don't. And I'd love to hear maybe from our attorney if, if I'm mistaken in, in the way I'm thinking about what we permit. If I'm, you know...
If I may, just so you all understand where I'm coming from. You know, I'm not kowtowing to a developer or a landowner or anything of the sort. But I'm hypersensitive to being clear and consistent in terms of our application of basically the parameters that are set out in the PD and our land use code and everything else. And I think you're, I agree with you 100%. I mean, if there is something that's non-conforming other than just our kind of subjective views of what we like or don't like, but something that's non-conforming, then I, I think then we gotta have that discussion. You know, we gotta know so that we don't bend over on something like that. But if it's really just, gee, I like, you know, brown shutters more than green shutters or something like that...
No, that's not where I'm coming from. I mean, this whole Northwest Superior area needs to be revisited because we didn't really think hard about the design and the building and what we allowed the developers to do. And we made a lot of mistakes because we didn't, we didn't think, and I'm not suggesting this is quite like that, but I, I'm not, I don't have a problem with the color of the shutters. I don't have a problem with the architecture other than the fact that the building is too big for that parcel to accommodate the parking that we all are sitting here going, there's not enough parking here. And, and there's not enough places for 20 residences to have their friends over and hang out. And without an easement granted from the, you know, with, from the, from the office park and owners going forward, there's no guaranteed parking for them either. And I, you know, as far as the common area goes, I'll give on that. But I, I know I can go into our land use code and there, I mean, we have little parks requirements. But I, those are, those are little things we all agree we can forego. I'm struggling with how many people, four to five bedrooms. Don't tell me there aren't gonna be four cars in, in, in many of these homes. And now they're all on the driveways, right? So you have two, I mean, you're gonna have a car parked outside all the time. And you know that the other 50% are gonna use one of those bays for storage, no matter how big that house is. And so, I mean, we know. We live here, right? We, we know what's, and so I, and I, I did see our attorney kinda looking up and I, am I out, I, I mean, am I out of line responsibility-wise or...
I mean, in terms of your view, you know, it'd be subject to the final development plan and the final plat. You have the criteria that are set forth in 16850s, 161040. So I mean, that would be kind of, you know, 16850 requires a view and comment, final decision that has, sets forth the criteria. So those are kind of the, the criteria by which these are considered. I don't know if that answers your question, but essentially that's kinda what, you know, your role would be in terms of taking a look at these. I don't know if that addresses what you're, you're asking.
Yeah, maybe I'm not prepared then to even vote, so.
Is, is the proposal consistent with the PD?
It's asking for exceptions. And so that's where you guys have the latitude to say that those exceptions are compatible or not compatible or acceptable, you know, within a tolerance. Yeah.
Those are the setbacks.
The number, I mean, even to the point of they included the bedroom units and the parking spaces. Those are all different from what has been established through the PD process.
So just so I'm clear though, from the bedroom perspective, that was just a parking standard, right? That wasn't like an overall, I mean, do we view those differently or just because we had number of bedrooms and a parking standard? Do you feel like that actually limits the number of bedrooms per unit? Or was that related to required parking?
I don't know how the two are separate. I mean, you can't, the parking would be inaccurate without the bedroom count being accurate. So.
Right, right, right. But I'm just saying, I'm wondering from a legal perspective if that actually restricted, you know, if this is now an exception to the PD related to number of bedrooms or if that was just, I mean, I guess had it said three-bedroom, you know, and then three spaces minimum, or I don't know. I'm just wondering, you know, to Commissioner Sotell's point, which I, I do think, right? When you come in with an FDP, if it complies with PD, you know, there are some things in hereby right that the applicant can, can rely on. And I guess I'm just wondering, on this particular standard, do you feel like this parking, the number of bedrooms truly is an exception to the PD?
I think that's how we treated every other application.
It also sounds to me like if, if we required a certain number of bedrooms per unit, that we could also require the number of parking spaces. So it would have to be set. We'd have to know how many bedrooms were going to be in each unit. And that would be set in the, in the FDP. Is that right? Like if, if there's five bedrooms, there's 20 units, that's a, would be 100 spaces. But they're only asking for 88 in this.
Right, they've, they've clarified through this FDP that a certain portion of them are four-bedroom and a certain, certain portion of them are five-bedroom. The ratio's the same. It's 3.5. So they're, they're calculating their requirements based on the 3.5 ratio. But in effect, they're actually providing, you know, two, you know, conceptually, you know, two, like, you know, we don't, we've always had this conversation about you have a garage space and whether or not it's used for a car, we can't really control that. But they have two, two offsite parking spaces that are internal and two that are on the driveway based on the sizes of everything that's proposed through the FDP. The width of the garage bays, the width of the driveway, the depth of the driveway, that type of stuff.
And there was nothing in the PD that limited the square footage of the units, is that right? right?
There's nothing in the PD that I'm aware of that limits the square footage of the unit. The PD's fairly thin, so. I've highlighted the stuff where the exceptions are, you know, have been requested or could be considered exceptions, yeah.
So going back to the staff recommendation, the staff was recommending approval subject to those issues that were identified?
Right. I mean, we, we've had the discussion with the applicant throughout the process about the size of the units, the amount of open space, you know, the spacing between them, all that stuff, and we've, not a lot has changed. Instead of having, I think their, one of their original applications had like two kind of common open space areas that were fairly small, and that because the size of the units hasn't changed at all, that just led to lesser setbacks. And so, the discussion and the conclusion and the direction was, you know, we'd rather have more spacing between the units at this size than we would have, you know, these two little common open spaces that probably wouldn't be used that well. And so, but, you know, we teed it up to have a planning commission and the town board, and the town board will likely have some history as to what the intent of that, you know, what their intent was, which is always different than what, you know, maybe staff understood it to be or the applicant even understood it to be or whatever, or even some of them understood it to be. So they'll certainly comment on all this as well and, and clarify whether or not that trail access was, you know, envisioned differently or that they feel like common open space. But, you know, if you guys, I, I do feel bad, I mean, I don't have a condition teed up for you, but if you have questions on, I mean, and there's, you know, a dozen ways to, to get there. You know, the size of the units would be restricted if you required the common open space because there'd be less area to develop. But, you know, if all the concern is, is parking, then, you know, and I think that, you know, the applicant has addressed their concern for overparking in an area as well because it does lead to, you know, more impervious surface and more drainage that they have to control on the site. And then, you know, potentially just more asphalt, you know, nobody wants unused asphalt. But the site, I mean, it kind of comes back to the size of the units and the number of bedrooms proposed as the, as the one controlling factor, but that requires more of them, you know, either reconfiguring their units or, you know, changing the ratios or actually making some sort of architectural change to reduce the size of them.
I mean, there's a struggle that this just, it isn't in a neighborhood, you know, it's not like there are streets around that can help with any overflow. It's, it's a very confined development, so. We're making a recommendation, right?
You will be, yeah, yeah. And if you have a condition, add me add the condition. If you don't, then it goes forward kind of as it is. There'll be a summary obviously in staff's memo to town board about what was discussed tonight and what concerns were raised, but conditions are clearly stronger than just a summary of discussion topics.
Well, how strongly do you all feel about the bedroom thing? Do you want to make that a part of the, the recommendation or a condition or do you just want?
I do, but.
You want it to be like an advisory comment? I mean.
I mean, to me, it's an advisory comment for sure. I mean, because it's, there is enough concern about it, which adversely affects the parking, and when it gets to the town board, I could see this having some issues. And so, I, I would think that from my perspective, it's, it's an advisory comment that should be seriously considered and, and know that, you know, you go, when is the board meeting? February?
Twelve, I believe.
Yeah, so three, you know, four more weeks and three more weeks and then, you know, take that time to consider what you want to present to the board and.
I agree with that, yeah.
So you want to get some hand raises on, just so you kind of know what some of the straw polls on the advisory comments?
Thinking advisory comment?
Pretending to the bedrooms and.
Pretending to the bedrooms.
And number of parking units?
Yes.
And then, yeah, the effect on parking?
I'm sorry, I would disagree with that. I think that that needs to be a condition and not an advisory point. I think we need to say there needs to be more spaces to accommodate, more parking spaces.
As opposed to the bedroom thing, or do we want to bifurcate that, or you want to do both?
I think they're related.
Are they related?
I think they're related.
I think they're related, but I think even at three bedrooms, we're talking about a difficult parking situation in this development.
I think at three bedrooms, it complies.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think at three bedrooms, we're fine. I think if we go up to four or five bedrooms and only eighty-eight parking spaces, we're gonna have some issues. And that that maybe should not be an advisory condition, but I think it needs to be a, a condition that there be more spaces.
Okay. What's the straw poll on that? Make it a condition versus advisory?
I guess I'd want to know a little bit from the applicant, from a feasibility perspective, you know, how they would plan to address that. I'm not an advocate for more parking, more asphalt. I don't think that necessarily leads to good design. I do understand that we've got, you know, possibly a parking problem here, but I would want to hear from the applicant how they would intend to address that moving forward.
Would you guys be prepared to talk about that now, or do you want to defer?
Can.
I don't think they can.
We can't. Forget about my question.
Never mind. I guess my only concern is an end to consequences, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, okay. However, though, it does give the applicant time to adequately address that issue, if they would like to, prior to going to the board. Because as someone mentioned, or one of the commissioners mentioned, it's, it's going to be an issue.
Oh, I have no doubt.
Yep.
So I think there are maybe two different ways that, what, you know, you guys are looking at it. One is shrink the buildings so that you don't have more than three, three bedrooms, and therefore the parking issue is met. The other is leave the buildings as is and add more parking. And I, I know you are not in favor of that.
If there's room, I, I don't know where they put it, but sure, if there's room for more parking somehow, I think staff sort of ruled all that out, but, yeah, I mean, redesign Discovery Parkway and figure out a way to do it all, I, I mean.
Or if they're capable of doing something on that, was it Canary Street? I, I don't know. So you don't, we don't have issues with the size of the building or the number of bedrooms as long as there's adequate parking? Is that where we're, where we're landing?
I would be on board with that.
Yeah, technically, sure, yeah. Personally, no, but yeah, technically, yes, yeah, I'm fine.
I'd be okay with that.
Good with that?
Yeah.
I do want to throw in one, I mean, just to tack onto that, this, this is, again, this is a confined development. It doesn't have access to anything else, and I think that's the complication here. It's, it's not like this is sitting in a neighborhood. This isn't part of a larger complex. It has room for people to spread out, so.
Sounds like you might be volunteering to do the motion.
Yeah. I don't know.
You want to take a crack at it, or does anybody want to take a crack at a motion?
I'm struggling with it being specific enough in a motion, I guess. Do we need to determine what the number, a number of parking spaces we want them to add is? Like, how do we direct them moving forward from a clarity perspective? I, I don't know, curious on that. I'm just struggling with that.
Just make it subject to their, to exploring the feasibility of adding additional parking spaces. I guess it would have to be on Canary Street. I mean, that's really what we're down to talking about, right? I don't think there's any other option, just based on looking at that plat.
Which then to me, you know, kind of the exploring comes back to an advisory condition, you know, and if that's what we want to do, then I'm comfortable with an advisory condition on that, but it sounds like maybe people wanted to go a little farther, I don't know.
Well, you got a good point, Lisa. What I'm struggling with is short of, short, short of saying, okay, you need to add ten more spaces, you know? I don't know what, what you would condition it on.
Can I jump in and provide two cents?
Yeah.
One, I think we've exhausted the possibility of providing more parking on Canary Lane, and two, Mr. Ovita already suggested that there, he'd be open to some sort of overflow agreement on his property to the south. So that might be the best thing for them to explore and come back to, whether or not there is an easement, and obviously if there's not, then there's some sort of overflow parking agreement or something like that for those units in a designated area within what's already established within the Discovery Office Park commercial element. And then I guess I would just, you know, also advise that, you know, one of the concerns Commissioner Sotell related was, you know, coming up with a condition that, you know, overstepped or whatever. And I think the parking issue is less clear. I think the bedroom issue doesn't conform to the, the PD. The parking, if you're gonna agree to the number of bedrooms, comes, conforms with town standards in terms of the ratio and the requirement. So, that's the only clarification I wanted to add to that. So, maybe you leave it as a advisory, you know, I don't know where you guys are landing, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but if it's still a parking, if it's just a parking concern and no longer a bedroom concern, then I don't know, it's compliant. That's what we have in terms of town code.
Yeah, I'd be fine with keeping it at three bedrooms and just throwing out a, that we, because this is a confined development, we do have some concerns about parking, even though it meets the, the official criteria, there's no place for overflow, you know, there's nowhere else to go, and, and just make that a, a general comment, that not a requirement that needs to be met. Is that reasonable?
That would be the rationale for sticking with the three bedroom limit.
Alternatively, I would propose maybe a condition that is more advisory related to parking that the applicant would, you know, really explore if there is any more feasibility, but that they would be required to record a shared parking agreement that runs with land for Discovery Office Park, you know, whether it's through an easement or some sort of agreement that actually runs with the land, so if you sell the property, that there are expectations from the homeowners as well as the future Office Park owner that they do have dedicated number of parking spaces, you know, hours in it, in it, in its set. So that, I think, you know, is a condition that we could, you know, add on here that is finite and has an end. So I would propose that as an alternative and to limiting the number of bedrooms.
Right, and I think because all it's gonna take is one slip and fall, if there isn't a, an agreement, a written agreement, one slip and fall of somebody being injured and then all of a sudden the parking lot becomes off limits. So I could think that the written agreement would be one way to go, but I still, I don't know, I keep going back and forth between whether it's parking or whether it's bedroom.
Okay.
You know, you change that bedroom requirement, and looking at it, it's two different, so Town Home One is anywhere from three to four bedrooms, Town Home Two is four to five bedrooms. So it's not necessarily that every one of them's gonna be five. So there, there is a ratio in there, and what does that do to our parking? So what's the maximum number of bedrooms for the entire development versus, you know, parking? And then work backwards and try to figure out what kind of impact that is. I'm fine with three and four bedrooms. I mean, I don't want to say three bedrooms is the max, three and four bedrooms, because as we said, sometimes those bedrooms turn into offices. But I think the fifth bedroom is probably one of the biggest issues, and it's, I think what we were trying to do is we're looking at parking and saying, add more parking on the lane, which would almost force them to reduce the footprint of their property, or of each building, which then would take away the fifth bedroom. And I don't know if that's what our intent was, but it seemed like we were trying to use the parking to reduce the bedroom.
And the PD says, the PD says three bedrooms. We have that to go on. That's there, that's set. Less likely you're gonna get situations in there where you're bringing in renters or you're, you know, bringing in adults to fill those bedrooms, so your cars should be less and the parking should be more reasonable. So you go on to three bedrooms, then we're all a little more comfortable with the parking.
But what do you think about Jason's comment about three to four? I mean, is that?
I, I mean, I'm more in favor of three because that's what's in the PD, but, you know, I, I don't. Maybe I don't draft the, the resolution.
Anybody else?
I'd be fine limiting the overall number of bedrooms per unit to four. I mean, I think it's difficult to administer over time. Somebody comes in with a building permit twenty years from now, you know, are we really gonna stop those fifth bedrooms from being built if there's unfinished space in there? Maybe, maybe not. That's hard to say moving forward, but, you know, we could compromise and just do an overall limit on the PD to limit them to four bedrooms, and then I think the parking maybe is more reasonable, as well as a shared parking agreement. I don't know, just.
I think, I think when people heard five bedrooms, that, that sort of tipped everybody over the.
Well, and I also think, I think to Lisa's point, I mean, that fifth bedroom is always gonna be viable in the basement. I think that's where the fifth ba, fifth bedroom has always been, so they, you know, from their perspective, they could just be like, well, we're not gonna put a fifth bedroom in, but it's gonna be an unfinished basement. And you have the option to put a fifth bedroom in at some point, and, you know.
Which brings me right back to the size of the house and the amount of parking and I don't, you know, I'm just trying to think about good planning, but the right thing is a smaller three bedroom duplexes so that there's more room for parking. That's the right thing. And I, is PD's three years old, two years old? I'd totally.
Two thousand, it was considered in two thousand fourteen and officially adopted in two thousand fifteen.
Anyway, so. So you just circled me right back around to these buildings need to be smaller so that there's enough parking to accommodate this confined development, but, but I, I'd say go for it. I'm not gonna end up being the one that, I don't think my vote's gonna, gonna change it going forward, so.
I mean, personally, I think we, three to four seems reasonable, you know? I hate to micromanage this stuff, but that seems reasonable. I think when you, you hear five up here and, and all of a sudden you kind of envision this massive structure.
But it is a massive, it is a big struc, it's not gonna change the structure. Our, our, saying three bedrooms or four bedrooms or five bedrooms isn't changing the structure. They're not gonna go back and change the structure. The structure is what it is.
But the problem is PD doesn't put any limitations on square footage.
I know.
That's the problem. So, I mean, you know, I don't know that there's much we can do about that. And, you know, again, at the risk of sounding like I'm the advocate for the developer, I'm, I'm trying to just call balls and strikes, but we could, we could come up with a lot worse than this. I mean, that's, that looks beautiful to me. I, I mean, I don't know how you could improve.
It does look beautiful, and, but in a, in a smaller scale, it would still look beautiful.
Yeah.
Okay, so why don't we move forward and let everybody go home? So what do we want to do here? We're gonna approve with an advisory comment? Are we gonna approve with conditions? Are we gonna reject it out of hand? What are we doing?
I'll throw out the first one here. So I'm gonna make a motion to recommend approval of resolution number one, series twenty eighteen, with the conditions as proposed by staff, as well that the applicant should be required to record a shared parking agreement or other equivalent that runs with land on Discovery Office Park establishing overflow parking. And I'm gonna leave it at that and see if anybody wants to add a condition related to bedrooms.
Anybody? Do we have a second? No, no added conditions?
I think, um, and I'll, I'll add the condition. I think from my standpoint, you know, maximum of four bedrooms is, is probably a condition. Yep, maximum of four, four bedrooms.
Okay, so we have a, a motion, and what's that called, Phyllis? An amendment?
Friendly amendment? I'll take that as a friendly.
Friendly amendment, yeah. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor? All right, motion's carried. Okay. Staff announcements.
Uh, next Monday, we have the town board meeting, which will discuss the Northwest Area Plan findings and recommendations. Darcy White from Clarion Associates will be in attendance to present. Planning Commission also made a recommendation to the board. I understand that you'll have representation there for that meeting as well. In addition to just considering the, their presentation and their, you know, findings and recommendations, there's also a recommendation for the budget approval for, so assuming that they approve the project to go on in twenty eighteen, a budget task item has also been prepared for their consideration at the same time, so that will all, could all get buttoned up at that meeting. We need to meet on the sixth to prepare our work plan, so the direction we had from the November meeting was one, Commissioners Sotell, I don't believe was here, and we didn't want to go forward with the work plan discussion also. to go forward with the work plan discussion also until we knew that this 2018 Northwest Area Plan was approved, so it didn't make sense to have those. You're welcome to leave those here if you want and not have to transport them back and forth. So those were the, so that, that's what needs to be done, and then we can follow up with any direction or discussion you may want to have on the, on the path forward for the Northwest Area Plan in 2018, assuming it gets approved. And then, this consideration, this item will go on February 12th, and so will your work plan, ideally, for the board's consideration. We'll have to turn that around pretty quick, because your meeting's on the 6th, and their packet usually goes out that same day, but we'll send it out or adjourn it out on the 7th in order for your work plan to also be considered on the 12th. So, those are my primary updates.
I was just gonna follow up on Stephen's point about the board meeting next Monday, and we've had some email about me being there to present the commission's recommendation that we move forward with Clarion, with next steps with Clarion, I guess. I'm gonna be in court on Monday, and I might, I might run late, so if somebody could also plan to be present, just in case I'm not there, and you just want to carry the torch for us, that would be, carry the banner for us, that would be great, just to make sure we have somebody who can basically get up and say that we're recommending that the board move forward, right?
Yeah, the way I guess I envision that occurring is that, you know, the item will come up, a planning commission member will step up and introduce, you know, kind of clarify what your recommendation is, maybe comment as much as you want to on the process that's occurred so far, and then introduce Darcy to just, you know, go over her presentation, so.
What's the date again of that?
That's next Monday, the 22nd.
And I think Martin estimated that this would be addressed probably around between 7:30 and 8:30, in that window, I think.
Okay.
So.
Look at the agenda, look at the agenda when it comes out.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll plan, I'll plan to be there.
Okay.
It's on my calendar to be there, too, so.
Okay, okay, that's great, as long as one, somebody's there to, you guys can draw straws and figure out who's gonna get up and talk, so.
Do you guys have anything on ideas for the work plan beyond the Northwest Area Plan? I mean, that you want to discuss tonight, or you just want to discuss it on? We just want to make sure that whatever plan we have, we actually get to, we have to discuss it and adopt it the same night, so either start thinking about it, or if you want to chat about it tonight, we can do that as well.
Northwest Superior's always a good idea. I think, I think we shouldn't leave McCaslin alone.
Should or shouldn't?
Should not.
No, I don't think we should either.
There, there was a serious accident there a few months ago, and that's, that's exactly what we want to try and prevent.
Oh, you're right.
An 88?
An 88, yeah.
Still on the radar.
Yeah, we gotta move forward with that, definitely. Okay, anybody else have any thoughts they want to bring up, I guess?
Any anticipated code amendments or anything else that, from your perspective, you'd like to, you, you might be bringing forth, or no? I'm not to say you're not busy, I'm not, that's what I'm implying, I'm just curious, if you have other things you think we'll be working on.
That's a good question, but, I mean, I think we're gonna have a lot of development applications in 2018, so.
Will this be the first year that we don't have wayfinding on the work plan?
That's a good point, we should try to.
If you don't want to add it?
Been on the work plan for 10 years, yeah.
That one, I mean, to be, to be honest with that one, it's kind of been taken over by Public Works, because they've discussed so much with, you know, the US 36 corridor and all that stuff, but I do feel like that, I hope that ball comes back into our court, because, you know, the rest of it is just as much planning related. Right now, it's very transportation heavy, but all that stuff will, and I, hopefully we provided a framework for them to work off of, and I've certainly shared it with them, but I have not been able to keep up with all Alex's meetings either, so.
But that being said, the wayfinding plan for 36, we're actually executing contracts with a contractor and hope to have corridor, consistent corridor-wide signage for way signing up by Bike to Work Day, so.
Oh, that's great, awesome, all right.
Any permits been pulled on anything around town that'd be nice?
So the one that I assume you're inquiring about mostly, I know that the permit's been requested, and my understanding is that it's still, I know that there was a meeting, I think it was today, with Public Works on their utility design, so I think the building permit's ready to go, but it's being, you know, until the utility design for providing water and sewer to each of those duplex units.
And tell us what that is?
Fourth and William, right?
Yeah, the fourth and.
Yeah, so, 201 William, I believe, is the address, so.
Okay.
But it's imminent, and I don't believe it's been actually approved or whatever the building permit yet, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, everyone, appreciate it.
Thank you, Trace, I should have cut you.